around screens and mute button too low and I see Junie here too.
Okay, great.
Do we have Nurya?
Welcome, Junie.
I see Chris. Chris is Nury on our way and we should just give her a quick minute.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Yeah, it looks like she's on her way.
Okay, cool.
Okay, well, I do want to make sure that Nury is here from the very beginning, so let's give her a minute.
I got this cute llama picture that I literally hung right back there for when I work in this office. There's a llama looking over my shoulder all day because it amuses me and you all know that I'm a cheap date and easy to entertain and that just entertains me. So if it entertains you too, great, I'll sit over here, but if not, just know I'm cracking myself up over here.
Love it.
All right. Here she comes. Ariel, all right. I was getting a little. We're getting background off someone. Better now? Okay.
Good. All right. Now that we've got Nury here, I will say, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to the 2022 Boulder City Council Retreat. Happy to have you all here and I'm now going to introduce Heather Bergman from Peak Facilitation who's going to run our retreat. And this is the last you'll hear of me running any kind of this meeting and Heather's taking it away from here. So thanks, Heather.
All right, friends. Boy, do we have a lot of fun stuff to talk about tonight. Just wanted to make sure that you all saw that we did put some more detail around the agenda and just want to run you through that real quick. This is the version that was posted on the on the website today. So we'll do a real quick round of staff introductions. So we know sort of who you have in the audience and who might be part of our dialogue on some of these priority ideas that you all have. Then we get to hear from all of you. You did your homework and you're getting to know each other and I appreciate you being getting to know each other even more the last bunch of days. So we'll just invite you in pairs to share out, you know, some things that you heard from one another. And then I want to jump right into really the work of the retreat that we have before us, which is to think more, to look more specifically at your priority ideas. I want to thank you right now for the homework that you have done. It was a last minute request. I know many of you hustled tails there to get us some new and more refined ideas to kick around tonight. At the very, very, very minimum, I would love for us to get through our housing and homelessness conversations. Those are very clearly high priorities for many, if not all of you on council. And certainly, you know, important and impactful for your community. So we'll spend some time on those. And some of you have been noodling on such things. And then if we get through those, super fantastic. Would love to talk about transit things. And if we get through that even more fantastic, we'd love to talk about occupancy. And if we don't get through those other ones, they do roll through to tomorrow. And so I'll look to you if we're coming up on eight o'clock to let me know if you want to push through and punt more to tomorrow. You know, we may have 10 pound meeting in a five pound bag and we'll have to figure out where to pick up that extra space. Unless the homework has just been absolutely stellar and y'all have solved these problems, in which case, good on you. So summarize again toward the end where we are, see what's left on our to do list for tomorrow morning and then get you out of here eight ish unless you determine that that's not the best and right plan for all of you. So I would love to go ahead and jump into it unless any member of council has any clarifying questions around what it is we going to be doing tonight. Hey, look at that. All right. In that case, because we do have a lot of staff here and I do anticipate some conversation with them tonight, want to make sure we know who's here. Nurya, can I hand it off to you to run through department directors in some sort of efficient way unless you just want me to willy nilly be calling on folk? I would probably do the same thing myself. So why don't we just call on folks directly? So we don't do the game of you call on somebody else. Which is, which can be very, very tedious. So I'll just do it in the order that I have all of you. Teresa, would you mind introducing yourself? You're still muted. Well, good. I got that out of the way for the night. Teresa Taylor Tate, City Attorney. Thank you. Ally.
Ally Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Amy.
Amy Kane, pronouns are she, her and hers, and I'm the Equity Program Manager for the city.
Thank you.
For your hard work, y'all.
Mike.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Mike Alder, as of our chief.
Jennifer.
Evening, Jennifer Douglas, Chief Innovation and Technology Officer.
Thank you.
Maris. Good evening, everyone. Here's Harold, Police Chief, and I have a couple of my executive team here, too.
Excellent. Thank you. Hi, Yvette.
Hey, Heather. Good evening, everybody. Yvette Bowden, Assistant City Manager and Community Vitality Director.
Thank you. David Farnin.
Evening, Council. David Farnin. I'm with Library and Arts.
Thank you. Chris Jones.
Good evening, Council, everyone. Chris Jones, Deputy Director of Community Vitality.
Thank you. Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Taddy U T, Director of Utilities.
Thank you. Hi, Kurt.
Evening, Council. Kurt Fernhoffer. I support the staff and programs of Housing and Human Services.
Thanks. Hi, Stephen.
Good evening. Stephen Redfern here, Deputy Chief of Operations for the Boulder Police Department.
Thanks. Kara.
Good evening. Kara Skinner, Interim Chief Financial Officer.
This is why you have to say the names because some people don't know them. Hi, Kara. Thank you. Hi, Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Cook. I'm the Presiding Judge for the Boulder Municipal Court. Nice to meet all of you.
Jonathan.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Jonathan Cohen. He him. I am honored to serve as the Acting Director of the Climate and Issues Department.
Thanks. Erica.
Hello, everyone. I'm Erica Bannenbrand, the Director of Transportation Mobility.
David.
David Gere with Planning and Development Services, and I will be also asking Charles Sparrow to join us tomorrow. When I'm guessing we'll be diving into a lot of planning items.
Thanks, David. Hi, Joanna.
Hi, I'm Joanna Krian, and I'm the Director of Fleet and Facilities, and I'll apologize in advance a bit disheveled. We lost our home in the Louisville Fire, so I'm literally in a closet. I'm still trying to get our feet under us.
You're amazing for showing up at all. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
You're a beast, girl. Hi, Amy.
Hi there. I think me, Amy.
Yep.
Everybody. Amy Cready. I am the Deputy Director of HR and currently in the position of interim HR Director for the city.
Thanks. Hi, Sarah. You're muted.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Huntley. I'm the Director of Communication and Engagement for the city.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. Carrie.
Afternoon, everyone. Carrie Onehammer, Deputy Police Chief.
Thank you. Dan Burke.
Hello, all. Dan Burke, Open Space Mountain Parks.
Thanks. Mark.
Hi, Council. Budget Manager, Mark Wolf. Nice to see everybody.
Thanks. Alicia.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Johnson, the City Clerk and Records Manager.
Thank you, ma'am. Vicky.
Good evening. I'm Vick Ebner. I'm the Homelessness Policy Advisor.
Thank you. James. You're muted.
Hello. Good evening, James Chell, Court Administrator with the Municipal Court.
Fantastic. Thanks, James. And Pam.
Good evening, everyone. Pam Davis. My pronouns are she, her, Assistant City Manager.
And y'all already know Taylor, but got to give her a shout out. Hey, Taylor.
Hey, everyone.
Ooh, that was like the voice of God.
Hi, everyone. Taylor Ryan, City Council Administrator, and my pronouns are she, hers.
Thanks, Taylor. And of course, y'all know Ryan, right? You just want to just introduce yourself. I hate to have you hanging out there.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Ryan Hinton, Gitchan Specialist for City and Zoom Facilitator for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brenda.
So much for being sneaky and just sitting and listening. Brenda Rittenour also part of the engagement team and will be Zoom facilitating tomorrow.
Great. Thanks, Brenda. And then folks, just want to introduce you to Samuel Wallace. He's on my team and he will be documenting your conversation tonight and preparing the comprehensive summary of all the things. Samuel, did you want to turn your camera on so people could see your shining face? There it is. All right. Thank you all very much. Staff, really appreciate you joining us tonight. Hope to lean on your wisdom a little bit as council finds useful as we go along. With that, I would be inclined to start here about what you all learned about one another in your pairs. Just so everyone knows. Council and Nurya together make 10 people. We divided them into five pairs of two and had them sit down and sort of interview each other and learn a little bit about history and priorities and thinking about things that are important for Boulder. And I am agnostic on who gets to go first, so I'm looking for a volunteer. Any, mean, money, do I have a mo? Who wants to go? Bob Yates wants to go. And Bobby, let us know who your partner was.
My partner was the lovely Nicole Spear.
What do you learn about Nicole?
Um, you know, my takeaway from my discussion with Nicole was we have a lot of things in common and a few things that are different. And so I'll start with the in common. We both have two kids. We both lived for a while in Southern California. We both have science backgrounds. Nicole, of course, is a professional neuroscientist and I studied chemistry in college. We're both pretty well educated. Nicole, of course, has Dr. Nicole Spear has a PhD and I have a Juris Doctorate degree in law. One thing that we both learned is we both have quite short attention spans, which probably explains a lot to our colleagues. One thing that Nicole, I'm going to write, I'm going to say exactly what Nicole said to me because it really resonated with me because I'm that person. She said, quote, "I am the person in my family who knows where everything is, and I am the person in my family who knows where everything is." And finally, I was, the similarities thing. I would observe that for both of us, the best way to accomplish a difficult task is to tell us that it can't be done. Because we are both challenged by those types of statements. So there's some differences. Nicole will describe me in a second, I hope kindly, but one of the things that Nicole Nicole is that I am not is calm. She's patient and she's empathetic, and I lack all of those skills, but I'm happy to learn from Nicole. And one of the things that Nicole is that I'm not is Nicole, I think, is shy and she's not attention seeking and I'm whatever the opposite of that is. You know, as far as outcomes, I think this is another area of similarity. You ask us to come up with some outcomes that we want to achieve while we're on council. And I think without being eloquent in my words, I think we both want to help people who need the greatest amount of help. And that includes in the topics we're going to talk about tonight and tomorrow, housing, homelessness, racial inequity, economic disparity, gender and sexual orientation discrimination, people with disabilities, and I could go on and on. But I mean, I think what we both are trying to do is identify people in our community who are hurting, who are disadvantaged, who are discriminated against, who have challenges and problems, and use the power that we have been invested with to help those people. And so I'm going to quote, I'm so impressed by Nicole. Nicole has a life mission and like, you know, organizations spend like, like hours and hours and hire people like you, Heather, to come up with their mission statement. And she has a personal mission statement. I'm just going to quote it because I was so impressed by it and it's something that I aspire to. And here's Nicole's life mission. "To courageously and compassionately empower excellence in people, organizations and communities." And that was like really powerful to me. So I really enjoyed my time with Nicole and I didn't know her as well as I feel like I do now and I I feel really blessed to have her as my colleague.
Thanks for that, Bob. Nicole, would you like to introduce our friend Bob Yates? I mean, he practically introduced himself, but you know, he left off.
Yes, no, I can add some little details. Thank you, Bob, for the lovely introduction. So some of the things that stood out for me is that I did not realize that Bob is the oldest of seven children. So he has six siblings and they are all very close and remain really close, which is is quite impressive. I have a hard time just finding time to hang out with my my brother even even on the phone. I thought it was really interesting that Bob's dad was a bookkeeper. His mom was a bank teller, but his dad was a bookkeeper, but Bob does not actually like to read books that much. He prefers talking to people and kind of getting information from people. So I thought that was really interesting. And also Bob lived abroad in London for three years when his kids were young. So those were three interesting facts that I did not know about Bob before. Some of the things that, you know, Bob kind of can can do well, and we talked a little bit about uniqueness. And, you know, Bob was a little hesitant to claim his unique abilities, right? But but we all have unique abilities and I think it's important that we recognize what our strengths are. And so some of the things that Bob uniquely brings to council is a an ability to manage finances and to be able to, you know, look at budgets, process budgets, think about them and how we can use them. And he how his career was in mergers and acquisitions. And so he talked about how he's done a lot of work in bringing things together as well as sometimes, you know, pulling things apart. So you can put them back together in a different way. And the thing that Bob said in terms of priorities that really stood out for me that I wrote down, Bob, I don't know if you noticed me doing that, but I really liked the way that you said that. Bob said, "For every family that wants to live in Boulder, we need to do whatever we can to allow that to happen." And that just really resonated with me because it's something that that I also feel very strongly about. And so, you know, as we're looking into 2022, I think one of the big areas for Bob of interest is really thinking about housing and how we can prioritize housing. The people who are here in our community who may not currently be able to live here and occupancy in particular, you know, is a way that Bob noted, we could do that relatively easily. We don't need to build new if we're just allowing more people to live in the rooms that already exist. So thank you, Bob. I enjoyed our conversation. It's really, really informative. It's really nice to get to know you a little better.
Thank you, Nicole.
That was terrific. Thanks, Nicole. All right. Who would like to volunteer to introduce your colleague next? Thank you, Rachel.
My pleasure, Heather, and I have the honor of introducing Matt Benjamin. So hopefully he does not mind us being up next. And and I want to make sure that we have maximum time for retreat discussions. So I'm going to go pretty quickly here on my introduction for my part. And I already knew Matt pretty well, so I just enjoy to get to know him a little bit better through this as well as working together in the pre-retreat stuff. So three interesting background facts about Matt Benjamin. For those of you who do not know it, my words, not his, on his job background, he is a rocket scientist. So we're very lucky on this council to have a literal rocket scientist at our disposal. Number two, probably relatedly, he is, most of his friends phone a friend for trivia night. So he described himself as full of useless information until it's useful. As an example of that, when we had an early frost last year, he put out tips to everyone for how to save your tomatoes and it worked in my case. And the third is he was an extra in an episode of Star Trek: Next Generation. I have one that he was plucked out of a line in a ride for a ride at Universal Studios. He was sort of the right sized person that they were seeking for an animatronic suit that they needed somebody to get inside of and wiggle the arms. So he was a Klingon dog. That's all I just got. Yes, Matt Benjamin. Two unique skills or experiences that relate to the work of council. In terms of experience, he has led a number of campaigns before being on council for city, for municipal campaigns. And so he really knows the politics and sort of how things get done. And a skill, he's very good at sniffing out BS. And then I will let him describe, we have a sort of a joint council accomplishment or outcome that we hope to achieve for the Boulder community in the year 2022. Or do you, Klingon dog?
Oh, no, not now. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to live that one down. But hey, you know, as always, got to throw out a nice little tidbit there. Well, thank you, Rachel. And, you know, certainly, you know, the fact that even though we've gotten to know each other, the work even we've done here, we've got to work in a different capacity than than we have before. So it definitely expanded our friendship and certainly our knowing each other a little more in depth. You know, she was spot on, and I think it was just appropriate that we got paired because we both like to just simply get down to business. So it's fitting that Rachel and I were paired because we both want to keep this brief and move on so we can actually get down to the business at hand. I will note that Rachel has probably the most recognizable council yard sign in recent history because her last name, like, we all need a friend. And it had that beautiful rainbow and it just, it is seared into just about anybody's memory that has driven along any major corridor in the last four years. So credit to that marketing and branding because it just resonates and we all could live up to that yard sign for political success. Three interesting facts about Rachel. At the beginning of her legal career, she worked for a federal judge in Florida and worked on both the Alien Gonzalez case and separately the Bush v Gore case. So a lot of experience early on in her legal career, which is really awesome to think of those sort of instrumental cases that we all pretty much know. I mean, how many cases do we know over the last 20 plus years? And those are two of them. So that's pretty awesome. Um, the other thing is her nickname is Glue and that comes from where in her college would actually let Rachel read what they wrote about her. And what they wrote when they read her materials and her resume and letters was that they thought of her as someone who would just keep people together as being the sort of resonating force to to keep a tight knit of groups of people together. And so her nickname became Glue, which I think is rather appropriate. And boy, does she do that with her work in this community and council. So it's quite pervasive for her. And lastly, doing summer work when she was younger, Rachel accepted a year's worth of ice cream for payment doing advertisement work. So that's awesome.
That's just genius.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Y'all ate well that year, Heather.
So two unique skills and experience. I think for one, she is a night owl. She's not shy to admit that and can handle, and that makes her able to handle the punishing environment of running late council meetings. It's equally why we can thank her for CAC moving to nine AM instead of eight AM. Is if you're a night owl, you're conversely then not the morning person. So thank you, Rachel, for your help with that. And then lastly, you know, she, as she sort of mentioned to me, she also has a very deep knowledge of politics and lobbying as she's been instrumental with working for flood protection along South Boulder Creek and also with gun violence prevention, which are two hugely important things that focus on having empathy for others and the plight for those that don't have the ability to have their voices lifted and making sure that health and safety are of critical importance. And lastly, you know, what is that shared accomplishment? Well, it is reaching vision zero for both homelessness and transportation. That is what our core is. That's what resonates with us. Probably why we get along working and as friends. So that's Rachel Friend, our council member. Pleasure to get to know you better.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Rachel. I'm learning so much about you folks. It's just delightful. I can't even stand it. All right. Who's next? Aaron.
Great. Well, I had the delightful responsibility to pair up with our fantastic city manager, Nurya Pera Venermyde, and we had a really enjoyable conversation where I learned all kinds of interesting things about her and her unique history and background. So I'm going to share some of them here with you. So interestingly, Nurya spent five years in Kentucky when she was a kid. So her father was a physician in the army and so they spent five years at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And I'm going to go from there to talk about one of her really unique qualities and identities. So when when she was living in the States at that time, they were the only Latino family in the area. And her mother didn't particularly speak English. They didn't have enormous resources at the times like her and her mom sewing some of her own clothes. And so Nury at that time was one of the bridge between her family and the rest of the world in a lot of ways, especially for her mother as because Nury did speak English. And so that that experience as a child is really guides some of her approaches to city government. You know, she thinks about when we have a system or a process here at the city or in other cities that she's worked, how would that work for for someone like her mother, you know, when she was a kid, somebody who doesn't necessarily speak the language and doesn't know all the processes? And she keeps that in mind as a sort of inspiration and something to check against as she develops her, the programs and processes in the city government. And I thought that was really very powerful from from her background and I think it's something that that will benefit from a lot, having that that approach and perspective. Something else was that she wanted to be a college professor when she was younger and studying things. And that's actually something that we have in common for a long time. I thought I was going to become a college professor. That was cool. We both had that on our career path when we were younger. She is in a was in a collegiate background and interested in how law influences society and political science and so thought she might go on teaching those things. But life took another course, fortunately for the city Boulder. And then then another unique goal of hers is she has a checkbox next to the name of all of the regional breweries. And so she's on what I'm sure is a very enjoyable campaign to try each and every one of our regional breweries. And I think it was not a coincidence that she told me this while we were each enjoying a craft beverage from a local brewery. So so that was fun. Another thing that, you know, unique about her background was about how she has worked in some medium and larger sized cities. And so is really her experiences in those cities have run the gamut. She's seen many, many of the problems or challenges that can confront any city in our contemporary society. And so that that background and working with those larger organizations in liberal cities like Austin and Minneapolis has given her a vision of adaptability, was the quote I wrote down, and how there are no cookie cutter approaches to issues. And you really need to, you know, figure out what the unique solution is for your community with each challenge. So I appreciated that that mix of both having seen many things but not feeling like the the answers to the problems and questions are predetermined and can just be copied and pasted into our our environment. And then the, we talked about what's the one goal that you would like to get accomplished in council here in the next years? This is in addition to visiting every regional brewery, but more on the on the policy side. And and Nury was quick to say that was on, working on solving the problem of unsheltered homelessness. You know, about how we can work with folks in that situation and how we can keep people keep people safe while helping people in crisis. I wrote it down in another quote because that was very good. How we can work human to human and compassion to compassion along with as part of a conversation with with our community on those issues. So that was very well put. And that's what I got. It was a great pleasure to get Nurya, get to know Nurya a little better or a lot better.
Excellent. Thank you, Aaron. And Nurya? Well, I conversely and appreciate those kind words, but I felt bad for Aaron because it feels like my life in the interview process is kind of an open book. So a lot of people have gotten to know a little bit about my life. But what I loved talking to Aaron about was, and you heard some of that, those similarities. I thought it was interesting that as we were talking about some of our backgrounds that are, we had some synergies and some paths that crossed. He mentioned that I spent some time in Kentucky and his, and I actually majored in political science. And his father is actually a professor of political science at the University of the South in Tennessee. And so not only did that sort of resonate with me, but it seems like politics runs very naturally in Aaron's family. And then while he started out as a physics major at Swarthmore, he actually fell in love with music early on and changed his degree and majored in that instead. and changed his, uh, degree and majored in that instead. And he has a particular love for choral singing, which I didn't know about, and was part of the Ars Nova Singers Vocal Ensemble that I had to go look up, specializing in a cappella music. And in fact, I've got a little note to myself, Erin, to go see if I can go find you on YouTube as I look at that. But while I was in college, I also was in a, a cappella group, Rhythm and Shoes. And so I found it so interesting that we had that in common. And then perhaps some bigger news for Erin, as I found out, is that after 22 years at his company, he is leaving at the end of January to sort of take a break and focus on the demands of this new job, which is exciting, uh, because we know how much, uh, time is demanding of all of you, but also just to the mayor in particular. And as he has a daughter who is going to fly the coop in two years, a sophomore in high school really wanted to spend more time with his family, which I certainly resonate as well. We talked a little bit about those unique skills and experience. And, and I'll say, as I talk about the first one, it will be no surprise to you all and to community, which is really that he leads with, in my words, sort of empathy and curiosity. Erin really strives to understand where people are coming from and relate, sort of meeting people where they are and not trying to get too oppositional, and yet still keep his position and share his position to, to hold on to his own integrity while looking for deeper understanding and learning about others' perspective. And I certainly have seen that in my time here in Boulder. And then the other thing that I really found interesting as well is that, you know, as, as he's living in the holiday neighborhood, he was also there as it was being developed and sort of working on some of the things there and watching and contributing to the growth and the development over time. He, I, I actually looked it up a little bit as we were talking, Erin, but, um, you know, starting a community garden, helping to create the Neighborhood Eco Pass program, uh, helping to develop that summer movie series. It really has given him a keen eye on, A, what livable, family-focused, community neighbors, neighborhoods can look like in the city, and really will allow that focus to spill over into what the rest of our Boulder neighborhoods could look like. So I found that super fascinating. Um, and then the one outcome or priority area I think Erin really wants to lift up is the EMT First Responders Program to really support community in ways that perhaps don't involve law enforcement. Um, and really excited to see that priority move forward. So it was super delightful. And I will certainly put a check on that particular local brewery establishment. So thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Nuria. Thank you, Erin. All right, who's next, Mark?
I was paired with Lauren. We had an, what I thought was an extremely pleasant conversation. I learned a bit. Lauren's family is from the Northwest. And I found out that Lauren has been a climber, but not merely a climber, what I consider to be the highest and best form of climber. She was a dirtbag climber for a while, um, which means traveling from area to area, uh, climbing and then moving on. That is something that almost every climber who is tied down to a job or other circumstances envies limitlessly. In the course of our conversation, Lauren was, expressed her deep commitment to a number of areas. One was obviously affordable housing. And interestingly, she also has a, a great interest in a reduction or streamlining of the approval processes that can make attainment of middle income and affordable housing more difficult. And we get hit with that all the time. Everybody who is in that industry always wants a streamlined approval process. But Lauren can tell you which things she actually wants done that would make that process smoother and easier. Now, usually you just get the, you know, the general complaint that it takes too long to get your approvals. She can tell you exactly which approvals ought to be changed in order to make the process simpler and better. Uh, and of course, she, she also has a deep commitment to the improvement of the manner and the substance of the way in which we address our homeless population. I found her to be very thoughtful, very substantive, measured and calm. She's committed to improving the lives of the people of Boulder and very much focused on the lives of those less fortunate. So I learned a good bit. I was very happy to have that conversation. And thank you, Lauren. It was, uh, it was a pleasure.
Thanks, Mark. Lauren, what did you learn about your buddy?
So I, I got to talk with Mark, which was great. We had a great time. One of the things that I am jealous of that I learned right away is Mark has a really good memory because he was able to do all of this without taking any notes. I think, um, while we might not be the first two people that you would think have an incredible amount in common, we, we really do. You know, between climbing, our experience in the building industry, coming sort of from bigger cities, um, and, and even the reasons that we live in Boulder, we all, we both, um, you know, have so much in common on those fronts. I think, yeah, what Mark talked about, you know, missing New York a little bit. He hasn't gotten on a plane during COVID to visit his family and sort of do the performing arts things that he loves. And similarly, I also, you know, I haven't gone back to visit my family in longer than I would like. One of the stories he told me while we were talking, I really liked because it's a little unexpected. So Mark was talking about climbing in Utah and, you know, climbing with, with his partner and, you know, somebody that they had just met. And this is, you know, when there was a little bit more oversight about, you know, what your gear is and what route you're doing. And so they go on this climb and there's sort of these rules that they know about. You have to wear a helmet, you have to, they check your gear, all this kind of stuff. And they go and they do this climb and Mark decided that he wasn't going to wear his helmet that day. But, um, because he's a rebel. And there was this other guy in the team who hadn't done the like intro class, you know, so they go, they climb, they come back. And one of the rangers is like, you know, they're coming back and the ranger is like, you know, I need to talk to you and picks out the other guy from the group who hadn't gone through the intro to call out for not following the rules because they'd been watching through binoculars, seeing somebody not wearing their helmet on this climb. Anyway, I, so don't, don't let his calm, mostly ordered facade fool you. There's a troublemaker there. But let's see, yeah. So, and then in terms of what he wants to accomplish, you know, we both, Mark talked a lot about sort of middle income housing. And I think, you know, seeing the airport redeveloped is a really obvious, or, or looking at the feasibility of that is a big thing for Mark that he would really like to see us do. And I think his skills, both, you know, I appreciate that, that he brings his skills as a developer to council, not only sort of the, the building industry side of it, but especially the, uh, the understanding of the legal framework and the ability to like, look at budgets in a lot of detail and really wrap your mind around those, I think, is one of the many reasons I'm excited to be on council with Mark.
Wonderful. Thanks, Lauren. Thanks, Mark. All right, that must leave our final pair of Junie and Tara. Junie, want to go first? Looks like. Take it away, girl.
Thanks. I would have to say, Heather, you save the best for last. I had a really great time getting to know Tara. Can you hear me? I know there's a little bit of a slowdown that I see on my side. But I had a really great time with Tara. Every time we went out, it was a blast. And we had more fun than homework done. So the three things about Tara I would have to say, which is very, very interesting. She's a New Yorker. She has a big personality. And I think that's one of the reasons I really like her. That really attracts me about her. She's a very, very honest person. Who she is, is, you know, the person you see is who she is. So I really appreciate that about her. She played racquetball, and that was her favorite class in college. And she learned paddleboard when she was in grade school. So she explained that there was this, you know, a concrete park where she lived. And so that's how she learned it. But one of the most interesting thing about Tara is that she won the racquetball championship in college. So you do have a, you know, a collegiate champion on our city council. Also, um, she learned to play the sax at the age of nine, and she still plays today. She was in jazz in high school and went to college, uh, to Berkeley College of Music for, for summer program. So between her and, um, and our mayor, bracket, we can have a full musical anytime. So, and the third thing about her, which is very interesting as well, and, and I think that's something I would say I find very interesting about her, my mom is a Christian and she's been to Israel as well. And she's a, she, she just love Israel. And Tara has been to Israel. She started the Israeli sister city called Boulder Ramat Hagnek Vig City, Sister City with her friend Peter Ornstein and her husband Robert and daughter Lexi. Um, and also Bob became the council liaison and Bob and Bob's wife Katie Yates went with, Tara's daughter went to Ramat, actually. So they've been there together. So there's that connection as well with our council member Yates. So really actually Tara was meant to be on council. So the two unique skills of experience, um, again, I think Tara, she wears her heart on her sleeve, not because she says it, because that's who she is. And I've experienced that. We hit it off right from the, from the get-go. So she likes to talk with people. That's a strength, right? That's a, that's a big strength coming from her. And another thing about her, which is to me, it speaks to who she is as a person. She is not afraid to say that she's sorry. She's not afraid to apologize. Again, that's what makes her who she is. And I'm, I've really had a great time getting to know Tara. And I think we'll get to know more of each other. I really, I'm very attracted to Tara. I like her a lot. So, um, so it was really a great experience to pair the two of us together. One council accomplishment or outcome that she would like to seize more middle income housing. And I think that's something that I'm passionate about as well. So I, I just think Tara, you, you have a supporter, a fan right here, sitting here. And I'm just delighted and glad to get to know you as a person.
Lovely, Junie. Thank you. Tara?
Well, Junie, didn't we meet in December? That is a really long time ago. So I'm impressed how much you remembered. I'm not going to say I remember as much, but what I will say is I had the time of my life and we went to dinner. We went to dinner twice. We laughed so hard that I will read you this personal text that I wrote to her on December 21st. I said, I had so much fun last night. And then she said, me too. And I said, we laughed our heads off. That memory will keep me smiling for days. And if you know me, you know that I like to have a good time. Fun is one of my priorities. It wasn't listed in my five priorities, but it is one. And I'm going to tell you a secret about Junie. She is so much fun. And when you watch city council, you can't always tell what somebody's like in regards to fun, especially, I'm going to say, because it's serious. But she is hilarious. So there you have it, Junie. I expect people to start calling you and wanting to go out to dinner with you because those were some of the most fun times I've had in 2021. So here are some interesting facts about her. First of all, she speaks quite a few languages. And I will say fluently, and being that I barely speak English fluently, I was quite impressed with her. She speaks, I'm going to read these off, French, Haitian, Creole, English, and Spanish in emergencies. So that was her first, the first most interesting thing. Secondly, she have lived, she's lived on three continents. And if we had extra time, I would do a game and ask people, what do you, continents you think she's lived on? But I'm going to name them for you for lack of time, and that would be Africa, Europe, and North America. Those are her three continents. Here's some more interesting facts about her. She has five brothers. And lastly, she is related to George Washington. Fun facts, it's true. So what unique skills does she bring? Well, she can read a room really well. I find that a very important skill, as I find that I equal with you, Junie, we both have that skill. And she processes, it processes info really quickly. And like I said, that great sense of humor and super fun attitude that she has is very important as well. I would say that what I love, there's so many things I love about Junie, but I'm, one of them, which I didn't even think about till just now, is you know what Junie feels. And she is so compassionate and she has so much. She loves life and she's so interested in so many things. And being with her, you become a better person. That's what I'm going to say about Junie. Her most important thing, I would say, as far as values, would be helping those experiencing homelessness. And she's good, I'm sure, talk about that in this discussion. She's mentioned mental health programming and bolstering our navigation system. She talked about overflow emergency sheltering and also a day program and day sheltering. But she also has other interests. She cares a lot about, uh, people getting a minimum, a livable wage. She cares about elections being fair. And she also is very interested in urban studies. So I'm going to say that, believe me, when you go to dinner with Junie and she tells you everything that's on her mind and heart, you will become a better person. That is a promise. That's what I have to say about Junie.
That was terrific, Tara. Thank you very much. And council and Nuria, thank you all for doing this, for indulging me. I, I know that you've had some time to get to know each other a little bit better, but I do hope everyone learns something new, not only about their buddy, but about your other colleagues on council, particularly some of you who've been around this boat a couple of times. Maybe you still learned something new about, uh, someone that you've served with for quite some time. So with that joyful, I'm just, I'm just pleased as punch over here. I just think you're all inspiring and wonderful. With that joyful introduction to our conversation, we now must carry the momentum of fun and excitement into our policy conversations. And for those who have, don't know all the, all, all the history, council received from me a homework assignment after our conversation on level of lift and the preliminary thoughts from staff on scoping on Tuesday. And I asked, uh, for some of the higher priority, more common topics, I asked folks to work in pairs to not just further refine their own idea, but to really look at the range of ideas from their colleagues on council, to look at the feedback on the scope and the level of effort in that preliminary conversation with staff on Tuesday. And work really hard and come back to us tonight for their assigned topic with one or more proposals for this, for their topic that are specifically very clear, very concise actions or asks of staff or of council with a clear endpoint. You know, we need to vote on a thing, we need to finish a study, whatever that might be. I asked them also to, to consider how, what, how long, how big a lift they think it is in terms of time. Is it a couple of months? Is it like a year-long thing? Again, council's best guess. And then, uh, what they have, ideas they have around staffing, a very common thing. And just, I think of a, a point of frustration for everyone involved was hearing on Tuesday that staff capacity is limited. And so what I asked them to think about for their idea is, is this something that you'd like to really suggest as a super urgent priority for 2022 with the staff that we have at this time? Is this something that, of course, it's important, but maybe could perhaps rest a little bit until there's greater staff capacity later in 2022 or 2023? And then if they had any suggestions around, we think this is something that could really benefit from the support of a consultant in order to minimize the impact on staff, they were encouraged to think about that. And so we have some of these topics with our assigned pairs for tonight, and some will carry over into tomorrow. And the other thing that I told council in their pairs is the purpose of the pairs isn't to say, this is the only thing we're talking about. the purpose of the pairs isn't to say this is the only thing we're talking about on the topic. But to start with that effort at integration and then of course, the rest of you on council, if you weren't part of the pair can revisit your own idea or provide additional suggestions for council to kick around. So our first topic on the agenda for tonight is housing. And I assigned Erin and Tara to get together and look at the range of ideas that we have heard on housing from council. And again, that feedback from staff on Tuesday night and come back with some refined proposals. And so Erin and Tara, I would like to hand it off to you. Let us know what, what you came up with.
Very good. Well, Tara, is there a, shall I go ahead and get us started and then I'll bounce over to you? Right, well, so Heather, that, that was, I will say, the hardest homework that I've gotten in a long time. I, yeah, that was, there was some challenging to do list. We had a lot of creative ideas from our council colleagues around housing. And there were some common themes. We did our best to try to group them into a couple areas. So we'll, we'll talk about a few targeted things that include some input from different people. And then we're going to let other council members talk a little bit as well about the, their priorities that are kind of, that didn't suit well into being put into different buckets, we'll say. And, and I will just say on the, on the staff side, you know, like I, I had a good conversation with Kurt Fernhauer this morning or maybe sort of this afternoon, it all blends together at this point. But I, I don't, I don't think we're going to say, okay, this is how much staff work involves or, you know, this I, I don't think that's up to us to determine, but I'll talk about a couple of ways that we think that changes might be targeted in such a way that they would maybe not require an enormously heavy lift. So that's, that'll be the hope anyway. Some, some common themes that we heard were around a need for more middle income oriented housing. So that's a desperate need in our community. There's a couple of people have already referenced that. Something else was about around having opportunities for some additional housing units that maybe are less expensive. You know, don't have the same amount of carrying costs and things like that to be more attainable to people of different income levels. And also, you know, ways that, you know, there might be opportunities for some gentle infill in some of the residential, existing residential neighborhoods in the city. So on the middle income housing side, Lauren had some great ideas about how the inclusionary housing program could be tweaked or shifted to maybe get some, some more of our goals. We currently, the inclusionary housing fees are based on the number of units in a project, which can encourage people to build fewer larger units. So looking at changing that to be based on the square footage of the, of the housing units instead of the number of units could incentivize some smaller, more affordable units. Also to look at evaluating how inclusionary housing could be more focused in some circumstances on middle income housing. Possibly raising the threshold, the income threshold for some some of that inclusionary housing and perhaps allowing some higher percentage increases in appreciation to, to make it more interesting and more valuable for people in that program. And, and also on the inclusionary housing side, Mark had made the point that there have been some circumstances where developers have committed to something related to affordable housing, inclusionary housing, but, but then that, that has not quite been has not followed through the way that we had expected. So that, that is possibly something that could be looked at as part of the same effort. So, and I did, I did speak to Kurt earlier about this and they are very, very staff strapped in this area. So this does not sound like it's something that could be tackled right away. But he didn't say that it was something they could tackle as capacity came online. So that's idea number one. Heather, what do, how do we do? We stop for a minute or what?
Okay, so what I heard a whole lot of things, the specific, can you just give me the, the shortened suite of the very specific, clear, concrete ask that you're looking for?
So revisions to the inclusionary housing program for oriented towards middle income and more, more attainable and more middle incomes units.
Thank you.
This is mostly your stuff, Lauren. So I, I do, if you want to chime in and see if we got any of that wrong or add any color to it.
Um, Tara, did he get it all right? Just real quick. Yep, okay. Rachel has a question or comment? Go ahead.
I'm just wanted to know, is, is, would you be targeting like precise code changes with this or an ordinance change or, or what is the ask along, like, how would this happen?
I, I believe that this would require, be pointed towards an ordinance that would revise some of the parameters of the inclusionary housing for them.
Fresh new ordinance or that's a revision to existing as far as you, you know, Erin?
Well, it's a revision to existing codes. It would be a new ordinance that revised existing building or city code.
All right. Anybody else have a clarifying question for Erin and Tara on this item? Bob?
It was really just a question and I don't know if this is directed to Erin and Tara or maybe to Lauren, who I know brought this forward as well. We had an inclusionary housing program that was around for many, many years. And then Erin will remember that about four years ago or so, Erin, we changed it, right? And we, we beefed it up and it sounds like the proposal is to beef it up further, which is great. I think we do run into, we, I think we always try to be a little bit careful and balanced about how far we push that because I think there's some laws out there. State laws that we pump up against around rent control that do limit our discretion and authority. Am I remembering that correctly? And I guess I'd like to direct that to Lauren, who knows a fair bit about this, or maybe even to Kurt Fernhauer.
Lauren, do you want to take a run at that before we ask Kurt?
Sure. I'm, so in the last year, there have been some changes to some of the rent control things at the state level. So I think looking at how we can take advantage of those changes is, is an important part of this update. And I know that Kurt also had some ideas of some issues that he sees with the inclusionary housing program and the way it's working. And so I think just trying to incorporate a couple of these various things in an update would make a lot of sense.
Kurt, did you want to add anything around that?
Sure. Good evening again, council. So Bob was correct. It was, it was updated about four years ago. And I think some of the things that we had hoped to obtain through that update. Some things worked really well, some haven't. We're actually getting sort of more units than we were prior to that update four years ago. And, but the, you know, the middle income housing, I think IH is part of it. I think there's other things going on as well. And there's, there's even things in our, in our codes that could probably be adjusted as well, which would influence sort of the number of units per acre as an example. And just discourage larger units in a, in multi-unit development. So I think IH is, is a part of it. And Bob, I think made a good point of, I think he, maybe you pushing, but as we push developers to do more, sometimes that doesn't work. And I think that, that's what occurred in our IH update as it relates to middle income for sale housing. And the, the, from, from a financial standpoint, it just doesn't, it doesn't work nearly as well for a developer to create those types of units. And so we may even need to consider making it more attractive to create middle income units. And there would be trade offs involved in that. And as I hear about this, I, I think these are all very good ideas to explore. It seems similar in scope to the, the update that we did for IH four years ago. And if I recall, that was, that was about a one-year process that we went through to, to create that update.
Thanks, Kurt. Anybody else have clarifying questions for this first housing related proposal from Erin and Tara? All right. Erin, it sounded like you had at least one more.
Yeah, I got two more for, for me and then I'll hand it over to Tara. So, because like I said, we did have a lot of great ideas here. So one, so I'll, I'll follow up on Kurt's point about other code changes to incentivize more smaller and more smaller and less expensive units. So we do currently have in our codes, a number of our zones limit the number of units by the open space required per dwelling unit or by the number of dwelling units allowed per acre. And when I say open space, we're not talking about capital O, capital S, you know, wildlands. We're talking about, you know, patios and, and things like that. Outdoor space. And so, and so what we end up with is, is a significant limitation on the number of units that encourages, say, you know, 3,000 square foot townhouses rather than 1,500 square foot townhouses, right? And so we're, and, and in looking for units that can hit a, a more attainable price point, you know, where you don't need as much living space. There's a, the, the proposal here would be to shift those regulations from regulating on open space per unit dwelling per acre and instead just do it based on floor area ratio or something similar. Where it's just, you know, you dictate how much building you can have rather than how many units you can have. And we've seen that, like, we varied that for a diagonal plaza last year specifically and, and changing, changing that variable of the open space per unit allowed them to bring forward a proposal that had great partnership with Boulder Housing Partners. A great deal of extra affordability as well as kind of some smaller mixed housing types overall. So the desired thing for, for this one would be to pass an ordinance that would change those regulations in those zones from, from the one type of regulation to, to the other, which hopefully could be a pretty targeted thing. I know that there are a few zones that would be affected, but I think we have other zones in the city that already do it. Where it's regulated by floor area ratio or something similar. So I think we already have a model in other zones that works well. So the hope is, is that we could do a fairly targeted work effort here to, to shift from one way of allowing things to another that would let us get more smaller and less expensive units.
Okay, excellent. Council, clarifying questions on this second proposal related to housing? It's pretty clear. Okay. All right. Do you want to hear from staff, Erin, or you think you got it covered because you already talked to Kurt?
Well, that might be more of a David Geer question. Question. David, do you want to pop in with an opinion on that?
Not whether, whether it's a good idea or not, but anything we need to know in terms of scoping or clarity of the question?
I think it's clear. I think it's possible. And I guess the main thing would be about resources and timing, which has already been stated.
Okay, I got, I got one more. So this would be about removing barriers on accessory dwelling units and some on co-ops as well. So in, in here, the, the idea would be to be very targeted. As we've worked on accessory dwelling units a lot over the years, we did a pretty significant overhaul three and a half years ago or so. And that was fairly successful. We got a fair number of additional ADUs in the city after that was done, but I think new new amounts of those have petered out to some extent after the initial set of construction. And I won't go on a long speech about it, but I think ADUs have a lot of benefits in terms of a gentle way of allowing additional people to live in mostly existing construction. So, and I think they, they have pretty broad support. So the idea would be to have, I've got two targeted changes on that. And one of them would be to remove the saturation limit that exists right now. Right now, there's a maximum number of ADUs that can be constructed in like, I think it's a 500 foot radius, but some number of feet. And that's very hard for staff to administer because they have to do these kind of complicated research and calculations whenever anyone requests that. Because it's not only just about ADUs, but any other kind of non-conforming like duplexes where they're not currently allowed or what have you. So by making that change, we could unlock a significant amount of potential for additional ADUs, but we would also take a burden off of staff. And we know how badly we need that right now, given the staff constraints and the, the over, overwork that they're experiencing right now. So there's that one. And then the other one would be to say, okay, there are two types of ADUs. One of them is an internal of the house ADU. And one of them is an external to the house ADU. And you know, like so a basement would be, apartment would be an internal one. An apartment above the garage would be an external one. Well, let's say a, a separate garage. Like if you had a garage next to your house with an apartment above it, that's externally ADU. The proposal there would be to say, okay, you could have one of each if you met all the various, you know, the other, if you met the requirements for an internal one or an external one, you could do one of each if you met those requirements. And I think that would also be a fairly targeted code change. Wouldn't require an enormous amount of figuring out how that would work. I think it'd be a pretty straightforward change, but would allow for some additional much needed housing potential on, on some of our residential lots in town. And, and then I'll just say on, on co-ops, the, that wouldn't be about breaking that concept wide open and going back to basics on it. But instead that we've heard from folks who have formed co-ops, that some of the licensing requirements are pretty onerous and hard to deal with. So they have to reapply every two years. They have to pay a very large fee. The, the relicensing process is fairly extensive. It's not, or the re, reapplication. And so the, the request there would be to, to say, hey, you know what? Can we just do a couple of simple changes? Can we make it every four years? Can we reduce the fee? Can we reduce the amount of documentation that's required to do those? And so just to reduce the burden on people who are generally don't have a huge amount of money or a huge amount of time. And again, just targeted changes that didn't involve going back to basics and hopefully could be done in a fairly short period of time.
So that was three things that you presented as one. Does that mean you were envisioning that as like a bundled code change effort?
Potentially. I mean, I think, I think the ADUs, those two changes could absolutely be one ordinance because they're both just changes to how ADUs work. And then I don't know if the, the co-op thing, I don't even know if we need an ordinance change for that. They may, that may just be rules rather than ordinances. So it, it might just be something where we gave direction. I don't know. I need to hear from staff what that would entail, but might be separate, but I think it could be quite small.
Lauren, question and comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to propose an additional one for the ADU. Portion. I know, you know, ownership opportunities are one of the things that we're looking to try and create. And right now there's ADUs aren't allowed to be condoized, so they can't be separately owned. And I think that repealing that is a, also a fairly minor modification that would allow for some of our goals to be met.
I'm a hundred percent sure. I have never before typed the word condoized. So thank you for that opportunity. I appreciated that. Staff, is this a David Geer question? Any thoughts about, about these items?
Yeah, a few things. I think that in terms of most of the ADU changes, those are pretty simple. I think that the co-op housing is probably also pretty simple. And of course, that's in terms of the drafting that would be required to make those changes. On condoing ADUs, I mean, that's a pretty major policy shift. It's not to say it can't happen, but one of the primary I guess theoretical underpinnings of ADUs is that they are accessory to the main household. And that the property is managed as one property as opposed to two. And then of course, when you kind of get in this, probably more detail than is warranted tonight. But there's also a lot of rules about how the properties are occupied. So it brings those issues into the conversation as well.
So bigger left than the other two, as you understand them. Okay. Excellent. Yeah.
Can I just say, and I'll just say that I know we're going to get to occupancy at some point, but I think as part of that conversation, I'd like to talk about whether we, whether we could evaluate or apply occupancy differently to ADUs as well. So I'd like to just point out, that'd be a good thing to talk about in the occupancy discussion as well.
Okay, so we might solve that cha, challenging component of this one in a different way. All right. Anybody else? Council, any clarifying questions or thoughts on that cluster of ideas there?
Call it a cluster. I mean, I didn't think it was that.
How to group. I'm sorry, a group. Yeah, yeah. You know me better than that. Come on, man. All right. And Erin, you said that Tara, Tara, you also have some other items on housing to visit with us about?
And then we're going to come to some other people. And then we're going to come to some other people too, but I'm excited to get them.
Okay, that's nice of you. You know, I first developed my passion. I don't have a huge amount of passions, but I developed a passion for middle income housing when I actually went door to door for my campaign. And that was what, like six months ago? So to say I'm an expert in housing, you know, that's not true. So Heather, please don't ask me too many questions. I'm going to throw them out to the expert.
All right.
But I will tell you that, first of all, I want to thank you, Aaron, for spending so much time explaining. I'm still in the learning mode and also Lauren. I really appreciate you guys. First thing I want to talk about is TVAP phase two. We got a fair amount of emails about that from the community as well. Since it is, we already did a fair amount of work on that. At the initial planning phases are done, I feel like, and so does Aaron, that it will be a great opportunity to think about TVAP pace, phase two, and that it would be zoned for a variety of different types of housing, but especially middle income oriented housing types. It would be a way, we have other ideas, you know, let's say area three or the East Boulder Sub Community Plan, but since this already has passed the initial planning phases, this might be faster and the others years out. So that's number one. That's all I can tell you.
TVAP. Would love to hear just a little bit more about, given where you are already on TVAP, what's the specific outcome or endpoint you're looking for on this one? What's the, what's the next big step there? What's the ask? Code change, study, complete, breaking grounds? What are our thoughts there?
Counsel, Aaron, anyone?
Well, we, it would be kicking off the, the phase two of the TVAP planning process. So the which David knows all about that. I saw him just about to pop up, but it would be taking that next step in terms of implementing phase two of the TVAP plan.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's an, in the plan itself, there's a number of steps that are supposed to happen as we move into phase two, one of the main ones being that we complete phase one. And I think that phase one is pretty much close to being built out. So it's probably time to start thinking about opening up phase two. And then the second part, the, the second big part of the TVAP project is there's some studies that need to be done just to ensure that we have the appropriate capacity with our utilities and transportation systems to accommodate growth in that area. I'm guessing, you know, my guess is, is that there is. But, but, but the plan does call for that. And then there's finally a financial component, because I think that there are some of the public improvements that are anticipated in phase two that will require funding beyond what is typically funded by a developer. Of course, that means that's funding that's probably going to be coming from the city. So we will need a funding plan for those public improvements. And then I guess finally to Tara's point about middle income housing, this is not part of the plan, but it's part of perhaps what we think about is that project gets scoped is there's a land use plan in that in, in that document. It was drafted in 2007. And one of the questions might be that that we need to, you know, look at the land use map and that, you know, and that would be another task that would be associated with scoping out that project.
Okay, so that seemed like a lot of steps. So again, maybe Aaron and Tara, based on what, what David just provided, was there a specific piece of that that you, that you're envisioning here? Is it just start some of those studies? Is it figure out the financial plan? Just did you have a vision? It's okay if you didn't, but if you did, love to hear it.
Well, my vision is we have to do so many different things to make it dent in middle income housing. So whatever we can start little by little is not to get overwhelmed with vivid, but just start doing it. So as David said, we finish off phase one and we start working on phase two. I have a big speech about the labor issue in about two, two times from here.
I would just add to that, that I, I think what we, and ask would be to kick off those studies that are necessary to begin the process. And then to come back to counsel with that potential, okay, what are, what are the next steps as we do those studies? You know, should we revisit the, the land use map? My, that's probably yes, you know, and, but to just get the process started, do the studies and then come talk to council about what the steps are that are going to be involved.
Super helpful. Thank you. Nicole, question or comment?
Yes, I have a question. But I wanted to make sure, is this the, are we done with sort of the housing? Part first, because I have a question for David, if, if we are done sort of presenting the ideas.
No, we got a few more.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to wait then.
Hold that thought. All right. Note, Lauren, question or comment on these?
Well, I've just heard, and this is related to TVAP two and sort of the financial analysis and things like that. You know, I know that the developers that own property in there are really interested in seeing this move forward and have expressed interest in also being willing to put forward some upfront costs. And so I was just wondering if there is any way for the city to take advantage of any of that interest in making, in helping this process move forward.
So I think that typically that would be part of the financial plan. And while we did not, when we did phase one, we had a similar, we had similar issues that we addressed during that process. But, you know, we, we, we basically came up with an internal financing plan where we were able to do it over, you know, able to upfront some of the cost of the improvements and then pay for them over time. If there were other people that would participate in it, that would certainly be a possibility.
Matt, question or comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just maybe clarify and maybe a little more context to what maybe Lauren was saying is, you know, from, from what some of us have probably gathered, those financial resources would be mostly geared towards trying to maybe offer consultants perhaps to liberate or, or accompany the limited staff time to kind of get some of those balls rolling. So I don't know if that, I don't know if that's, that specificity changes maybe the response a little bit, but I think that was kind of the direction that, that I had heard that they were looking to try to help in some of that jump starting is acknowledging staff, short resources and can consultants, which they might offer some financial assistance to kickstart this and get the ball rolling a little quicker.
Well, I, I find that in the field of planning that consultants require an incredible amount of supervision to kind of help meet community objectives. And I think it's frankly, much more efficient to have things project managed by a staff member. And then as we develop discrete work items that are able, you're able to kind of lop off nicely. I think that that's, those are the areas where consultants come in handy. So for example, with phase one, one area where we were very consultant heavy in, in implementing TVAP was having consultants help us draft the form base code. And then, you know, that's just an example of like a discreet, something that you could lop off and.
Okay. So some opportunity there, but maybe farther down the line after staff sort of gets the ball rolling, David?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you know, like I said, I think that as we get, as the department gets resources back online again, I think that we're going to be stepped up to be able to do this.
Okay, awesome. Mark, you look like you have a question or comment?
No, I did, but I think David asked, answered it adequately. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks. Counsel, anything else on TVAP and associated thoughts?
David, I appreciate your opinion that you think you all can tackle this. It's exciting to hear.
Awesome. Tara, what else you got?
I got two more. Next one, middle income down payment assistance program. Thanks to Sam Weaver and Bob Yates for bringing this forward. I think it was 2019 and then the voters passed it. So that's already a lot that was done. And so most of the work, I think about 80% was already done. So this is why I feel like it is a good idea to continue forward with this. And for anybody needing an explanation, I'm going to give the floor to Bob Yates, his very wonderful project to explain it further.
All right.
Thanks, Tara. So as Sarah mentioned, this was developed in 2019. It was a partnership between Sam Weaver and, and me and other members of council and Kurt Fernhauer and his team and a bunch of bankers, actually. And through a series of meetings over, over months, we put together a program. We presented it to the voters because we wanted to make sure the voters bought in on it as well. And so in November night, 2019, we presented to the voters and 69% of the voters gave a thumbs up on that. And so we were all ready in rare note, launched this program in early 2020, and then something really bad happened. And so it got put on the shelf and it has been on the shelf ever since then. And so I think the ask is to launch the program. The program, as Sarah says, is not complete. It's probably 80, maybe a little bit 90% complete. There's still some work to be done. So I don't want to say that we just have to push a button and we're off and running. I don't want to get too much into the program, but I just can be real high level view. As, as Aaron pointed out with ADUs and some of the other projects for housing, there are ways to increase housing opportunities without actually building new things. And this is one of them. So the idea is that there are, there are community members as a cohort in our community who are in the, solidly in the middle income who are just saving up for that 20% down payment so they can get that house. Maybe this is first house or maybe they just moved to Boulder. But, but the goalposts keep moving because they're saving the money, but the house is appreciating faster than they can save. And so the idea is that the city would come in. We wouldn't issue the first mortgage. They, they would simply get, get their first mortgage with, with a bank, but we would help them with our down payment. We would loan them maybe 10 or 15% towards the down payment. It would be a loan by the city, be a second mortgage. The loan would carry an interest rate, but it would not be paid by that owner until they sold the house three, five, 10, 20 years down the road. The interest would simply accrue and then at the end, the, the owner would pay it. They would realize the equity appreciation there. There's, there is some preliminary funding for this. The city has almost a million dollars in, in a special account dedicated for this type of program. And then we also got permission from the voters for the, for the city to borrow money and then reloan it to people as part of the down payment assistance program. The, the best part of the program, in addition to the fact that we can get some people into middle income housing that otherwise are renting and not quite saving up their down payment is that it would be deed restricted. Each house that is enrolled in this program would be permanently deed restricted, not only for the family that maybe moved in first, but forever, forever in perpetuity. And so the, the program would have a cumulative effect. So let's say that we could put 10 houses in this program the first year. And then maybe in the deed restricted and then another 15 houses the next year, then another 20 houses the next year. At the end of that three years, there's 45 houses in Boulder that have been deed permanently deed restricted with, with an depreciation cap. And so the over time, we will have more and more and more middle income housing that stays attainable to the middle income in our community. So not only are we helping that first family, we're helping all subsequent families who want to purchase those houses. The idea is, is that over time, we will, we will create a solidly middle income set of housing without building a, a brand new house. This is all existing housing that, that could be put into this program. So that's a, a description of the program. And as Tara said, what we're looking for by way of action is to pick up where we left off right when COVID hit and, and finish up planning the project and, and then launching it.
Excellent. Thank you. Matt, question or comment?
Yeah, it's a question about the, about this program. Are, do we have any built in sort of metrics to measure success for this program? Really, I mean, are we, are we measuring on wanting to get 10 houses a year, two houses a year, 50? So I'm trying to just wonder that, you know, five, 10 years from now, are we looking back and going, is this program meeting the needs that we want? And do we want to then continue to have the staff capacity to manage something that might be going for four or five years, just by chance, doing no homes? I'm just trying to wonder, where do we throttle and set our expectations on success of allocation of resources and, and the program going forward for the long?
Yeah, that's a great question. And Kurt will correct me if I'm incorrect, but I think that we set for ourselves a relatively modest goal of about 20 houses per year. And so, you know, at the end of five years, we would have 100 houses. And at the end of 10 years, we'd have 200 houses. And we can compare that to how many thousands of houses are, are, are in Boulder? And how many of those could be deed restricted, put them into middle? This is not going to solve our middle income problem. This is just one tool in toolbox. This is one thing that we can do. Aaron and Tara mentioned several other things we can do. And I think when it comes to middle income housing, it really is a shotgun approach. We need to do this thing and this thing and this thing and this thing. So middle income housing is a dumping assistance is just one way to do that. But I think our hope is over years, we, over a few years, we can get a few hundred houses into this program permanently deed restricted.
Excellent. Thanks, Bob. Nicole, go ahead.
I just had a couple more questions about the program, but is it appropriate to ask details about the program? Okay, all right. Then a couple of questions I had, Bobby mentioned that in this case, that the program would loan 10 to 15% toward the down payment. Is that of the sort of 20% needed for the down payment, it's giving people 10 to 15% of that? Or is it giving 10 to 15% of the down, down payment? The home value, right?
Yeah, no, great clarification. So the idea is we, we still want the, the home buyer to have some skin in the game. So let's say that, that the house is $500,000. And the, the bank will lend $400,000 against that 80%. So there's 100,000 that, that, that family needs to come up with. We might loan 80,000 or 70,000 of that 100,000 down payment. The family would still show up with some, some skin in the game. We would loan that money and then that money would accrue interest, but there'd be no payment by that family during the time that lived in the house. It would only become due plus interest, modest interest at, at the time that they chose to sell the house.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was just around, you mentioned an appreciation cap. Is this sort of like the permanently affordable housing where it really can't appreciate more than a certain amount over time?
Yeah, it is. And what we would want to try to do and, and Kurt can remind me of some of the numbers that we tossed around and this, and this program is not finalized by any means, but what we want to do is we want to strike a balance. On the one hand, we want that number to be high enough so that that family does realize some equity appreciation, right? And so they're motivated to go out and do this, but low enough so that with that permanent deed restriction, that house doesn't maybe appreciate as fast as the market. So that many, many years down the road, you have a whole group of houses that are, that are below market, that are cheaper than what, wherever the market takes our middle income housing. Well, I don't know if we have middle income housing anymore in Boulder, but the rest of the housing in Boulder. And Kurt can talk about the numbers. I think we kicked around numbers like five and 6% to kind of strike a balance between letting the homeowner build equity, but also capping that appreciation so that there would be a, a, a house that's below market. Kurt, am I getting the numbers directionally correct?
Yeah, I, I think you are correct, Bob. And I agree with your sort of description of the, of the initiative. And I think the, the Nicole brought up are, were, were things that we were still yet going to, to iron out as well. And I, the sort of the challenges that we had are, we weren't at the first buyer. They were at the second buyer and modeling that and understanding what that looked like. And that, that's where we needed, you know, help of bankers and that sort of thing. And I also agree with, with Bob that a consultant to help us put this together would be the way to go. And, you know, finding the right consultant with this type of expertise. It's, 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 it's a relatively new idea. It's not something that we're totally copying from other communities. And so it's, it's, it's going to take a little bit of effort to figure out those, those details.
Great, thank you.
Nicole, can I, can I colloquy on your, on what you just mentioned? Because I think you said you had a few other questions, right? Oh no, that was it. Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, it's, yeah, so I, my, my question is, is so if we, if they're going to be paying, do the interest on the down payment assistance at the sale of the house, and then they're already capped on an appreciation? That means that that's going to bite on what is our take up, what is already a, a pretty small appreciation cap. And so it's going to chew that up a bit is my understanding. And so I'm trying to wonder how, again, even if they take advantage of this, they can still gain some if they're already losing some of that, that end up that equity at the end, when they sell the house, because some of that's being chewed up by the interest that's going to grow, that they have to pay back on sale. And so I'm just trying to wonder, how do we throttle that and make sure that that difference is substantive enough that even if they embark in this program, they're still going to realize enough equity on the backend to, to make it financially worthwhile to stay in that house for, for a decent amount of time. So I, yeah, we're clearly in the weeds and I know it's not done, but those are some of the questions that I think jump into mind kind of quick.
Yeah, and I'll just, you know, as, as Kurt said, this is not fully big, but let me just use numbers just to make the point. Let's say the, the appreciation cap is 6%. And let's say the interest rate on the, the muted interest rate on the loan that the city makes is 2%. Remember that 2% is only on that down payment portion, right? They, they still get 6% on the entire equity. Okay. So all of the equity is going up by that amount. They're only getting, only charged 2% at the end of the, the, their ownership on that small amount. Plus on top of all that, they're paying down their first mortgage, right? They're making principal and interest payments on their first mortgage. So they're building equity in two ways. One, just the appreciation, which is presumably below. One, just the appreciation, which is presumably below market, but still substantial. And then, of course, the principal balance is going down on the first mortgage, which is eighty percent of the value of the house. And so you can model this out and say, they're doing okay. They may not do as okay as someone who just simply buys a house in the market at the market rate and sells it at the market rate at the end, right? They're not going to do as well as that, but they're going to still do pretty well. And for a family that can't ever get that down payment, that's better than being a perpetual renter.
Mark, did you have a question?
No, Bob responded as I would have. It's actually a pretty good deal because of the fact that the interest is only on that portion of the second mortgage amount. That is going to be dwarfed by even at a cap of three, four, five percent, the appreciation on the total price of the house. They're going to dwarf that. So it'll be a pretty good deal.
Excellent. Aaron?
Yeah, I'll just note that we worked through many, many of these questions and issues. And so I think it'd be valuable for folks, we could get the memo out from when we were working on this a few years ago. And I think a lot of these questions would get answered. But a lot of thought went into it anyway, although there is still some work left to be done.
Excellent. All right, anything else on that item? All right, Tara, it sounded like you have one more, maybe two?
Last one, and this is an ask for council, but it's also an ask for our community, everybody who's listening and who will be listening. So you know, one of my favorite subjects to talk about, which I know a lot about, is the supply chain. But we also have a very severe labor shortage in this country, something else that I like to discuss, to talk about. As you, many of you have heard of the Great Resignation, right? So my ask is this, the city of Boulder staff capacity is very stressed right now and continues to be reduced with additional resignations. And I just want to mention that it's not like the labor shortage in this country is turning around at this point. It is still going on. There's still the Great Resignation, and I don't exactly know when it's going to turn around. I don't know that anybody does. So my ask and Aaron's ask is we would like city council to work together with staff to set up what I would call a queue without specific dates when it comes to housing. And then we, and then let's agree as a council that we can get to each item in the queue as staff capacity allows. Because one thing I don't want to do is stress out David or stress out Kurt or any of our wonderful staff any more than they are being stressed. We know, and Lauren, you mentioned when we talked on the phone today, that maybe in a year, things will turn around, but we don't exactly know what things will turn around. So that is my ask. And I'm wondering if Nicole, who I've talked to, or Lauren, has anything further to say about that.
Nicole or Lauren, want to add anything on that one?
That's a great lead in to my question that I was saving for the end of all these, which is a question for, I think, David and maybe Kurt a little bit as well. In thinking about, you know, these things that have just been heard, clear, we don't have capacity to do them all.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Sorry.
After Tara went, I was going to actually call on a couple of other people to chime in on one more thing. And sorry, I didn't make that clear. Heather, should we shift to that? Like, and then we'll be done with the housing discussion?
Yeah, we probably should. I mean, none of us know what you're going to do, so I guess we trust you.
Okay, that's a foolish choice. The one other one, is both Matt and Rachel had ideas around duplexes and triplexes that were kind of similar but not identical. And so we didn't want to just lump them into one thing because they were sufficient, had some sufficient subtleties to them. So just wanted to give each of them, you know, a chance to present what they were thinking on those items. If we could, and then that'll wrap up the housing stuff.
Great. Thanks, Aaron. Well, Matt and I have been working hard to try and, you know, bridge gaps here anyhow. So I'll try and lift up just a duplex, triplex lift that, you know, we could take, you know, any or all of it under consideration. And Matt can chime in, but kind of continuing on with the theme of more attainable housing and purchasing options for more folks in our city. We would propose a change to the code to allow for duplexes and triplexes more liberally, for example, in RL1. And go through the code and remove current constraints that would block implementation. And anything to add to that basic premise there, Matt?
The only thing I would add is, you know, start by just making that available on corner lots as just a place to start to measure some impacts and then see if it can expand beyond that. But that would be sort of just my only caveat, but keep going.
All right, so corner lots, I'd be fine with that. And then alternatively, or in addition to, or as part of this, I wanted us to look at the city and maybe nonprofits to be able to purchase single-family homes and convert them to deed restricted duplexes or triplexes as part of an attainable housing program, which is a little bit different than affordable or middle. It could be more of a sliding scale. Like with Bob's, you know, description of middle income, it would need to be reasonable appreciation, but remain attainable. Because right now, there are a lot of people who don't qualify for affordable or middle income, but we still want to make space for them in our city. That would include, you know, just a wide swath of people that at a million dollar buy-in are getting left behind in our city. So I would think as part of this, that if the city purchases homes that are sort of at the end of their lifespan, like mine, which is a nineteen fifty's home, we could convert them to a triplex, say. And by selling a range of purchases, we might be able to just about break even. But in any case, we could create three units that are attainable where there now is one sort of ending its lifespan. So again, I think that with the, this is something that would have been better to start fifty years ago when houses were much more affordable. But with the million dollar average now, I think that this is a situation where if we don't get started pretty soon, as opposed to code changes that we could make anytime, we will not be able to do it in the future. So I would advocate for both changing the code for duplexes and triplexes, but also specifically enabling the city to start purchasing them and converting them into attainable. And Matt, if you disagree with that combo, speak now or forever hold your peace.
No, I don't see an issue with the combo. They may, I don't intrinsically see that. You know, I think a part of this is we've been focused on sort of our, you know, control of middle income housing, either through an inclusionary housing modification or specifically deed restriction. And I think that by just plopping what would be inherently, intrinsically smaller units amortized over a single property in a single-family zone that already has high expense, they would be inherently less expensive to buy into. And so we might allow some market forces to get people in the neighborhoods at a much cheaper price than they otherwise would be able to get into neighborhoods. This is feeding back into schools and enrollment. I look at my neighborhood in particular. It's a big issue. This would be a welcome change for enrollment to these two elementary schools in South Boulder. So I think there is a lot of ways to sort of come at it from a few different angles where we can kind of let people make those decisions for those properties and not feel like the city has to deed restrict or dictate the terms on a particular dwelling.
So Rachel, the first item is clearly a code change to remove the constraints to triplexes and duplexes. Wondering if you have a sense of what is the specific action that's needed by council or staff to, what you said was allows the city to purchase single-family homes? What is the gate that needs to be opened or moved through to allow?
I think it's a program that would need to be created.
Okay, great. Thank you. Lauren, thoughts on that?
I was just thinking that maybe, like, to me, it seems like both could kind of be a similar thing where it's a condition in the code, like if you meet a particular criteria, you get, you could have the opportunity to add an additional dwelling in it. So Matt said corner units. I could also see it being, you know, on a bus line. Because I think there's some, you know, some residential where the whole street would make sense, but making it so that these things aren't, so that we're not just changing the zoning, but targeting the changes for transportation, basically the kinds of things we're trying to create either more affordable or sort of slight increases in density in transportation-rich areas.
Can I just add to that? Maybe then it could also be a condition that the city can purchase anywhere. So it wouldn't have to be on a transit corridor or on a corner lot.
Does that, and then combine both of those into one concept, which is code change to remove restrictions for all those things and enable the city? Or are those still separate items? I'm just trying to get the point.
The city would, you know, that's a separate consideration, but I think to Lauren's point of sort of, you know, making changes where it's allowed. One change could be just that the city can do that as an allowable thing.
Okay, Mark?
I guess my first question would be, do we have a definition of attainable other than cheaper than a house? And my other concern would be that this becomes another Martin Akers statute, because I don't think you're going to see much of this on Mapleton Hill, where the buy-in for the house is going to be a million nine, two, five, something like that. It's not going to be very attainable housing for anybody. And lastly, I would ask if we've done any kind of financial analysis of what this will get us and where. As I said, it looks to me like it's going to be primarily a Martin Akers, Grass Grove kind of program. And it's not going to be very applicable to certain areas of the community. So it's not that it's a bad problem. I like Rachel's suggestion very much, but I'd like to know what we're getting. And we ought to know what we're getting with some degree of, you know, financial analysis and then look at it and say, yeah, that's what we want. Let's go. But I start with, what is attainable housing? Is it just less than the house?
Okay. We'll look to anyone who might know the answer to those questions from Mark. Bob, is your answer, hand out, because you know the answer?
No, I have a different question.
Okay, fantastic. Maybe I'll come to staff, starting with specifically, do we have a clear definition? And is there any stock research or analysis that y'all have done on this or a somewhat related or similar topic?
Yeah, I'll go. And then I don't know if David has anything to follow up with. When we did the IH update about four years ago, one of the, we did do some financial analysis. One of the things that we looked at was developments had to have at least five or six units before it made, it even started to make sense to create an affordable unit. What council's talking about here is not necessarily creating a deed restricted unit within that development. And I'm not suggesting that either, but we haven't done any kind of financial analysis to look at what the outcome of that sort of code change would be. And my assumption is we'd have to sort of understand the project better in order to do that.
Okay. Bob?
Got a different question. Maybe you said this, I just missed it. Rachel and Matt. So I get the idea of allowing duplexes and triplexes maybe on the corners as Matt suggested, and then maybe broadly. So that all makes a lot of sense to me. What I didn't quite follow is the reason the city would be the buyer of these houses that would be torn down or the buyer of the lots. Why would the city be financially in the middle? Is that because we couldn't entice any developer to do this because it doesn't make economic sense? Or what's the subsidy the city would provide?
So just to be clear, these are kind of two, we're combining things, but I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater on Matt's proposal, which is just plain allowing duplexes and triplexes in RL1. So that is one aspect. My pitch, Bob, is also just that the city look at purchasing because we can sell it then just at a break even price rather than, you know, having the market incentive to make money and profit off of converting homes. And so hopefully, they would be in an attainable category that we would obviously have to define. I mean, I, you know, I can't define what is the proper cutoff for attainability. And I think that that would change, you know, if our homes are two million dollars a year in ten years on average. And we want for, you know, city staff and nurses and people who are, you know, a nurse married to a teacher is well beyond the affordable and even middle income qualifications right now. So I'm just trying to get out in front of creating a sort of stock of homes in this town that will remain affordable the more expensive that we get. And I don't think that we have much that gets at that right now. So this is just one idea for one way. And I think if we started accumulating some and converting, we would probably figure out the rest. But again, it's partly just allowing us to have duplexes and triplexes in more places and then partly creating a program for some more attainable. And I think, you know, I understand that you need five units to break even when it's affordable. But, you know, if one of these units could be sold at, you know, at a higher rate to somebody who's in a more attainable category, then you could probably break even a little bit more easily on just triplexes at this point.
And would your view be that the city would buy these things, create these duplexes and triplexes, sell them to the families? And the city's support would, the city would break even? Or were you seeing a city subsidy where we would sell them at lower than the city's cost?
Well, I think we'd have to analyze that, but I would hope that we could break even. But I don't, you know, as Kurt's saying, we're going to have to analyze that. I understand that this has kind of been done in some other cities. And I think throughout Europe, like they've been buying up some properties for, you know, for the fifty years that we didn't get out in front of here. But I think that it's just worth us at least allowing for the duplex, triplex, and then considering a program where the city could help people to afford to be in Boulder who can't right now.
Great, thanks.
Rachel, was your hand up for that or something else?
I think it was up for that. Thanks.
Great, cool. Matt?
Thank you, Heather. So, yeah, and I appreciate Rachel drawing some separation between the two because, yes, there is a different financial component to the program. She is totally suggesting that has the city more interconnected with that process, beginning, middle, and and I think to the question about what's attainable, it's totally subjective. So, you know, in a neighborhood where the average home price might be two million, if you can get into that neighborhood at one, yet that's attainable because it's more attainable than it previously was. So I think, so I think setting some bar is a totally subjective number in that sense. And I'm not sure we can technically define that without just being totally subjective and pulling a number out of a hat. So, but the real point is, with regards to how we do that, you know, we already allow it in RL2. And so we already allow it in a low-density residential environment that's just RL2. So this isn't that different, really, to be honest, when you think about it. It's not a huge lift, more or less. It's not a huge leap from a concept we already do. We're just adapting it in a more restricted sense on lots that typically are already bigger than their surrounding lots because they're corner lots. So we're providing that space. So I think it's a little bit easier and more straightforward and we can leverage what we've learned from other parts in our community to gain that understanding. And so I want to make sure it's not just sort of seen as this sort of one-off idea in a silo.
Okay. All right, Mark?
Yeah, I just want to make clear that I just want to understand what we're doing and who it's going to benefit. We often talk about creating housing for our in-commuters. Is this that? Or is it going to be, you know, there's no question that three million dollar triplexes are less than a million and a half dollar townhouse. But what is the market we're trying to serve? And again, I do like Rachel's idea. I think combining that with Bob and Sam's middle income support program could have some very interesting outcomes for us. With regard to its general application, I just want to know. I'm sure the analysis is capable of being done. But as I said, I don't think you're going to see a lot of it in Mapleton Hill and a couple of other areas. And it would be nice if it was a program of citywide application. If you required one of the triplex units to be affordable or subject to Bob and Sam's program, that would have a great impact on how I view it. And, you know, if the marketplace wants to value the other two units higher, that's fine. I just point out that we're seeing townhouses being created at fifteen hundred square feet that are selling for a million and a half dollars, new construction. And that makes me a little bit cautious about whether we're going to get the kinds of benefits that we anticipate from doing this. You know, condominiums are now trading at about a thousand dollars per square foot. Are we going to do better with triplexes or not? And we are. And we ought to take a look at it to see if we're actually going to make progress in solving the problems that we want to solve. You know, the the city, if it owns the units, can do whatever it likes. Private developers who create three units at 1,500 square feet, if they're charging $1 million and a half dollars for them, it may be cheaper than the whole house, but I'm I'm not sure it's it's doing anything close to what we desire to achieve. And that's really all I'm saying. We need to look at.
Let's take a couple other comments on this one, and then I think we've got all the ideas on the table. Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, so I think similarly to what Mark was talking about, that making sure that what we allow is accomplishing goals that we set forth, I think, is really important. I don't know, like, I like the idea of the city being the developer, but I don't know that that is necessarily required in my mind. It seems like if we did, yeah, like, allow, you know, a middle income unit to be added to what would otherwise be, you know, it's like you can do a duplex if the secondary unit is you know, a deed restricted middle income unit, that might not be, you know, it's probably not going to drive a lot of people to buy land to do that kind of flip. But if you own that property, it might be enough incentive to add that additional unit. And so I think that, you know, we could sort of gently go into that program by creating some incentives that we might dial up in the future.
Okay. Rachel?
I think that might be an old hand, but I I guess I would also just say that just circles back to like, we don't have to figure out all the details of any given proposal tonight. We just have to figure out, do we want to green light this and put it on the work plan and and then we work it out? So Nicole, that.
I think that's right. Part of why I was giving you a little bit more runway on this one is if for some of you, the first step to this concept is some additional study and analysis, that is a different discreet first ask, then what do you say we just go and change a code and create a program? So I I heard several different versions of that. What I what I've kept on on this sort of the working list that I've got going is the code change as one item and the separate thing of creating a new program to allow the city to purchase the things. And you all might want to, you know, visit about that later when we see how prioritization shakes out, which we'll talk more about later. David, you look like you have questions or comments or other such things.
Just one one comment. This will be a very big lift. So I just want to put that out there. I think that in terms of the ideas that are put out there, that there are probably things that implicate our comprehensive plan in addition to the regulatory matters, which are probably not all that difficult. And then, you know, from Kurt's perspective, the programmatic issues as well, so. You guys up to making the hard decisions.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding which this you're saying is a big lift. Is it the code change to remove the constraints on duplexes and triplexes? Or is it the creation of the of the city program to buy houses and convert them?
All of the above.
All of the above. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. Aaron, was that all the consultation we wanted to do before we actually let Nicole have her question?
We're finally ready for Nicole's question, which I'm really eager to hear. I've been waiting a long time.
Right? She's been so patient.
Thank you. Okay, it's kind of three questions, but they're all really sort of tied together. And so this is a question, I think, for David and Kurt, which is, you know, thinking about this, right, we just heard a lot of things, some of which obviously require more than others. How many could we get done, given staffing constraints and everything we have right now? And, you know, what are what are sort of the scope of things that could be maybe pieced together? If there's more than one that would be possible while we're in this rebuilding and recovery phase for staff? So related to that, what's going to get us the results fastest, right? Ultimately, the problem is that we're trying, the problem we're trying to solve is that we don't have enough housing for the folks who are working in our community. And and even some of the folks who are living in our community already are really struggling to afford the increasing costs of housing. So what gets us there fastest of these things, right? What are, there's always low hanging fruits you can pick that's going to get you where you want to go a little faster. So I'm wondering about that. And then my third question that I am going to keep repeating in every discussion that we have is what part of this can council do? So I hear that staff is really constrained, right? We we are here, right? We're here not just to dictate work, but to be an active part of the work and to help move things forward for the community. And so where can can we legislate solutions in a way that, you know, obviously, if we create something new or change something existing, it will create some work, but not as much work as it would take if we asked you to do the entire thing.
Okay, Bobby, have a thought on that before I start checking with staff on these things?
Yeah, I just wanted to pile on with Nicole, especially on her last two points. I I think I'd like to suggest that maybe the first analysis before any of these analyses are are done is exactly what Nicole said, which is which which ones generate more units faster, right? Because he's also like wonderful programs. We should do all, we should do everything. Okay, that's great. But, you know, down payment assistance, maybe that's only 10 units a a year. Maybe that's way smaller than ADUs or 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 corner lot triplexes. And so I think I'd like to have staff really go back and say, okay, there's like eight or 10 great ideas there. This is how many units they would each create per year or whatever. And I think that would be that would help us with our decision process about what then to put in queue. So the second thing I want to agree with Nicole on is we're here to help. I mean, this this should be a working board. I mean, I know people have day jobs and families and so on and so forth. But but people on this council have expertise and experience and knowledge and access to resources as well. And so the things that we're throwing out there, it's easy for us to say, hey, do this, do this, do this. Throw it back to us. Ask us to help you. If we have areas of expertise or ask us to bring in people who have experts. I know that there's a management test there as well. So I'm not saying it's as easy as telling Aaron to go off. It sounds like Aaron's retiring now. So, yeah, I'm Aaron to go off and do this or or Nicole to go off and do that or whatever. But please do use us. Don't be shy. You don't don't look at us as like, you know, Mr. And Mrs. Tuesday night. I mean, we we we're here available to you seven days a week, so please make us a working board.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Nicole.
I just want to follow up on that, just just with with one thing, Bob, related to your first point, which was around sort of the the low hanging fruit, right, things that can get us to results faster. I I often see staff being so careful and so thoughtful in wanting to give us all the information to help us get to a decision. And I just want to say, you know, for me, I recognize that you all are experts in how to do this. And I'm not looking for, you know, a detailed assessment of like, this is going to give us this many units for, you know, this much time. It's really just as the expert, what do you think? You know, I I just I want to hear your opinions. What do you think is going to get us there fastest? And and just having sort of that level of of information, I feel like would be helpful. I don't need to, you know, have specific numbers of units or anything like that. And I don't, you know, Bob, if you feel differently, please feel free to chime in there. I'm really just looking for how can we get to quick solutions for folks in our community who are hurting right now?
So Nicole, just so I understand it, are you looking for Kurt or David to give you a response on the fly like right now?
I would say if they are comfortable with that, that would be wonderful. I'd love to hear that. If you are not comfortable with that, because I know my brain sometimes needs a little more time to process information. I just want to offer offer that to other folks, too.
Matt, I'll go to you before I check in with Kurt and David.
Yeah, just a little anecdote from a time working on a couple NASA projects was cheap, fast, good, you get to pick two. And so I, you know, where that applies here is is relevant. And so it's which one of those two do we value and which one of those two do we want to have control over?
Okay. I remember that coming up from another council member some some number of years back. I don't remember which one or what the context was, but I that's a common refrain. Aaron?
Yeah, Nicole, those were excellent questions and great framing, so it was worth waiting for. But but you know what? There actually was one other thing.
Oh, my God.
But it's but it's an add on. It's an add on. And and I apologize. This was from talking about the code changes for for changing to to different ways of calculating the loud number of units. That one of the ideas in in Lauren's list of other ways to encourage more housing that's less expensive was to reduce minimum parking requirements so that so that you can have more space available for your housing and it costs less because you're not building the expensive parking. So I forgot to roll that into that idea. But credit to Lauren for that excellent suggestion.
And and that that idea that I'm rolling that into is the one about passing the ordinance to change zone requirements and regulations from dwelling units to FAR, that whole one?
That's correct. It's like not exactly the same, but but would be a related.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm like I'm like one of those old late night TV commercials, but wait, there's more. And with that, I'd love to hear Kurt and David's thoughts.
So Kurt and David, you have been asked a question, but also given permission to punt for a later time if it's more than you want to wing. And so do you want to roll them dice?
I want to roll them.
Okay, hit it. Can you get the Ginsu knife if you do that?
Well, I'm going to ask you guys. I hope I don't get the knife. So with that said, in terms of like what I would anticipate in terms of regulatory simplicity and outcomes in the lower density zones, ADU reform, and if you wanted to go towards parking reforms as well, are eminently doable. And they can be done in a manner that probably, when I say brings the comprehensive plan into call, it can probably be done without bringing the comprehensive plan into the conversation. The ideas that Aaron was kicking around earlier about redefining how we calculate density in probably more of our medium and higher density zoning districts, probably pretty easy to implement, probably a pretty good idea. And it's something that we as staff have talked about. You know, just in terms of like the changing urban form, you know, a lot of those types of regulations, I think, were more intended to result in a suburban outcome. And I think that we're we're moving, we're moving away from a suburban outcome. So I think that those two would be that that would be relatively simple to implement the stuff on the duplexes and triplexes. From the regulatory perspective, that's a big project. And I think that if you guys are interested in you know, pursuing those, and there's there's a regulatory component you guys have talked about. I think that that would be Matt's idea. And then a programmatic one, which was Rachel's idea. I think it would, that would be one where I would ask that we do some project scoping before we really hit the ground running on it.
Okay.
And so Kurt?
Yeah, I would I would definitely agree with with David on on those. The 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 recommendations like for the ADUs are things that are in line with with, I think, what has been thinking about already. And the the middle income down payment assistance program, I think that's if if we do it through a consultant, which we should, it's, I'm not going to say it's relatively light impact on staff, but it is an impact on staff. But it's, we would want to lean on the the consultant quite heavily. The not sure which which other, oh, and then the IH. I think that's a relatively significant project. I I think it's probably a a nine to 12 month project, something that could, however, probably begin scoping and exploring probably later in the year. From from my perspective, we wouldn't be able to put any time into either one of those two, at least for the first half of the year.
Kurt, just checking that on Nicole's question of which you think might be most valuable in terms of creating impact for the community? Did you have a thought on that?
Yeah, so I think the down payment assistance. I I sort of agree with the numbers that Bob has put out there, maybe 20 a year. But I when we were designing the program, we also knew that we just didn't know. And so until we actually get it in place, it's it's hard to make assumptions about that. It's probably, I'm going to say it's probably similar in impact as far as the number of units for eight that to ADUs. However, it's also a very different thing that we're accomplishing than ADUs. IH is will also be impactful. It'd be hard to put a number of units on it, though. But it it is, IH is really the workhorse of our affordable housing in the city of Boulder. It's it's one of the oldest in the country. It's the most evolved. And it's probably one of the most successful. But it's it always has to be, our our market is changing. Our housing market is changing, and it has to evolve along with that. So it it's something that we should try to do. And it, you know, it should be on someone's priority list if we can get to it.
Yep. I might add one, just kind of in passing, to mention two things. First, you know, that we are nearing the end of the East Boulder subcommunity planning process. So we are going to be moving into implementation planning as soon as we're done. So that's something that is already on the planning department's work program. The second thing is T VAP. And at some point, it's that's not on our work plan right now. But it's probably something that it's just about time to be on our work plan. And of course, we'll look to you for guidance on that. But, you know, that would probably be something that, you know, at the earliest, that we would kind of get, you know, really ramping up on starting to work on that would probably be in the third, third and fourth quarters, if so directed by all of you.
Thank you. And may I ask one follow up question to both you, Kurt and David? Which is, you know, I know that every every department kind of has its own priorities and, you know, things it's working on. Can you let us know? So these things that you just described, ADU reform, parking reform, how we define density, those those would be relatively easy lifts. It sounds like middle income down payment assistance program, the inclusionary housing would be relatively significant, but Kurt, it sounds like, you know, it's something that could be started in, you know, maybe the the second half of this year. If, you know, doing things like that, what does that knock out of the stuff that you you're already doing that you wanted to do? Is the stuff that, you know, could be added? Or is the stuff that will replace things that are already there? And if so, what are? I'm trying to get to a place where, you know, is this going to destroy anything that you all are working on and your staff are really motivated to do right now?
Well, mine can be really fast because we have so little capacity in the department right now. It's a pretty quick description. But right now, we have Carl Geiler, who is our code specialist. He's working on the used table project. Presently, the community benefit site review. And there's one other, I think, he's he's working on one other project that is escaping me at the moment. But, you know, some of those projects, like, you know, used tables and parking and some of those kind of things. I was talking a little bit with our staff about those, like, could those go on the shelf if the council wants to reprioritize that work plan? And frankly, it might not be a bad idea, given how we are watching the world change in response to the pandemic. And it's affecting how land is used, how people park, all of those things. And it might be not such 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 a not bad idea to just kind of see how we adapt to the pandemic. So there's that. There's, we have two comprehensive planners right now. One is pretty much tasked full time on finishing up the East Boulder subcommunity plan. And then, of course, her vision is One is pretty much tasked full time on finishing up the East Boulder subcommunity plan, and then, of course, her vision is. On. You know, the implementation phases that will, we we were intending to start right away. And the other comprehensive planner, there's a number of responsibilities. Related to the capital improvements program in the budget and. As well as kind of master planning coordination. And so he he is pretty much. Wrapped up with work right now that you can't not do. So that's kind of where we're at. And so, and and what our plan is, is that. We're trying to recruit as quickly as we can so that we can build back the capacity that we had. You know, prior to the the pandemic budget cuts.
Yeah, so. So I'll say there's nothing that we can really stop doing. Many things were sort of in the in the middle of, it wouldn't make sense to. Stop them, and a number, number of them are just normal. It's just part of our business of what we do every day. And the 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 other thing that I'll add on to David is that. What while staff has reduced, work has actually increased. The amount of development that's coming through the door right now. Is. Certainly the highest since I've I've been here. So the work's going one way and the and the staff are going the other. And that that's created a lot of challenges. I I think for me, a win for the next six to nine months. Is to simply be able to keep the doors open on the things that we're doing. And we have about. I would say sort of maybe eighteen to twenty staff in in HHS that that are sort of operational staff. Management staff, that sort of thing. We've lost about six or seven of those, and so we're, we're at. You know, at a, like a forty percent level right now. And we need to, we need to fill those positions, and then we're probably going to be asking for a couple additional positions in some areas as well. So. That that's why I think we're asking for a bit of grace on new things for. You know, at least for the first half of the year at a minimum.
Yeah, and I would say ditto on the FTE requests for planning and development services as well. We're not done building back just based on what was approved in the twenty two budget.
All right, Matt has a question or comment, and then Aaron?
Thanks, Heather. And, you know, I I want to absolutely acknowledge. What you've said, both Kurt and David, and the stresses on both your departments, and I really want to acknowledge that. That's difficult and we and we get it. You know, and as we talk about, you know, the question about what are some of the easy things, I'm hoping that what's not lost is that scaffolding of. We have also big things that we need to do to reach our goals, and how do we not lose sight or lose progress on some of those big? And hopefully, where we settle on here is some easy short, some medium, a little longer, but not just completely punt on these. Big things that are going to have big impacts on housing, on affordability, on our climate goals, on our transportation goals. Because they're so intrinsically all connected. And so I'm just hoping that we don't lose sight, that we we don't just stop the work on those big things that. Even though it might take a while because of staffing, will will give us the dividends that we have been seeking for for so long.
I I I appreciate that, Matt. And 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 it's certainly how I have been talking. With my staff in terms of like how to approach this year's retreat, the priorities of the council. That, you know. It's super important, we can get it done fast if, you know, and then start to. Work out what those, you know, goals and objectives are and, you know, and work the list.
Noria, are you on this same conversation? Let you jump ahead here for a quick minute.
I am, just quickly, because I just want to understand, I want to thank that this conversation has been really great, and. I know staff has been working hard to sort of put those questions that Nicole has been asking in our mind as well. And what, and I just want to make sure to staff to call out, because what I think I heard, and I want to clarify with you, David, is. As you've been thinking about trade offs, it feels like use tables and some of the parking stuff. Could come off the table to make space for some of these priorities that council would like to move forward. That's a trade off that you and the team have worked on internally to offer up to create more space, right, given our capacity. And then for you, Kurt, what I'm hearing is you've got a lot of stuff that's just ongoing, and so. The ability to add on is a little link to staffing up as opposed to those trade off conversations. But really wanted to hone in on particularly for planning, that there is space to have that conversation and say, I'll table this for the moment. And make space for something new.
Sure, sure, but but I want, I want to kind of emphasize that the space is about that big.
Yeah, so I just wonder if we start moving into sort of decision making space here. What what I've heard from from these ideas that have been brought forward is people have some detailed questions on, you know, a couple of them. But I I haven't heard anybody say, you know what, that's the worst idea ever, take it off the list immediately. So it seems like there's some interest in in all of them, and, you know, to Tara's point that she was talking about earlier. That we understand the extremely limited staff capacity. And so maybe it's about setting up that queue that that she was talking about, about saying, okay, let's, here, here are our. Ideas and things we'd like to pursue. Let's get them on the list, we'll get to them as we can. And hopefully more quickly over time as staff are able to rehire and build up capacity again. And then I I also heard that an opinion from David and Kurt, that there are some reasonably similar. Impacts that could be achieved in these different programs. And so maybe we we start with, you know, a couple of the easier ones. I I will say I happen to have proposed a couple of the easier ones, so I hopefully people don't feel like that's self serving of me to say that. It it might allow us to get, you know, a handful of things accomplished, while to Matt's point. Not not losing the thread of some of these bigger moves, right, that can be really impactful in our community over the long term. So don't say, well, we'll never get to them, you know, but but understand that it will take a little bit longer to to ramp up and start tackling those issues. So that was the framing I was seeing. So what do you think?
Well, I want to let Noria jump in here in terms of. What is most helpful? Is it to create sort of a a running to do list? And have sort of what Tara described as a queue with staff getting to the things as bandwidth becomes available? Is it more helpful for you to have council pick their top couple of two, three? What what would help you and staff figure out what the work is and where council's actual priorities are?
You know, I I would say this, and. Because of the current moment that we're in, traditionally, we pick one of those, you know, dozen or so priorities, and we can just stick to that. It feels like this year, as we're building up to capacity, and I don't know if this will bear out, but it could be that some departments build capacity up sooner than others. And then what would really be helpful is to know, not to have an endless queue, right, to still tick, stick to those main priorities, but perhaps to start ranking them. So that certainly we hear from you what's most important, so we know how to fit that in. But it could be that if there's something that is a lower priority in a particular division or a particularly part of our staff team. Could start to work in that direction, we know what that looks like, right? But the reality is that it's going to be a iterative process as we build, and what's truly helpful to us are. Those initial priorities so that we know this really is critical for you as we go forward and we talk about it. Because if the thing that is really critical is the big, big lift. And that takes a variety of staff, then we know that's going to take us at least twelve, you know, twelve months or fifteen months or whatever. But if it's a series of smaller bite sized, start a study here, do some research here. Figure out some of the low hanging fruit, if there is, if I can say there's ever low hanging fruit on. Code changes or regulatory changes, and we can jump in in that way.
Okay, Judy, thoughts on that?
I have thoughts on something else, on another issue that we didn't bring up as part of the housing.
Rachel?
Well, I I it seems like Judy should probably go first because she, that it sounds like it should have been brought up earlier. Maybe if something was left out.
Yes, the urban baseline studies. As part of the or housing priorities, we didn't talk to talk about it at all.
I think it's a separate, I think it's coming up later.
Yeah, you're talking about planning reserve? Yes, yeah, that's all, that's, that got its own special category, Judy.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll get to it tomorrow, yes.
I was just gonna weigh in if I understood Nuri's question or point, right, like, I I think that the or Aaron's maybe. That we do have to, as a council, prioritize and and rank, because otherwise I think we're, we're not doing our job as policymakers. So if we just. You know, say, here's a stuff and staff can choose, like, I think the community is is. Expecting that we are are prioritizing what we think is the biggest community need, so I I would not, I I think we need to take ownership of that.
Okay, Bob, similar or different?
Similar to what both Rachel said and Judy said. I'm happy to prioritize and rank and put things in queue and whatever, but I think it's premature to do that now. We can certainly give relative. Waiting to what we just heard on housing, but we have several things farther down the line later today and tomorrow that also affect. The departments that we're talking about today, and so I I think we need to hear everything. Including the one that Judy raised before we start doing that, otherwise we're we're picking just a subset.
Thanks, Bob, and I saw you got an actual thumbs up, not even an e-thumbs up from Rachel on that. So I was going to suggest a similar thing, particularly knowing we're doing, Judy was headed with the with the planning reserve, which is. You have lots of ideas, and as we see, saw on our color coded idea flipboard, right? There, there's, there's cross implications and lots of sexy ideas and a lot of different departments. So what I've actually been tracking here for you is in a spreadsheet. All the ideas that I've heard, and I'm actually going to give it to Chris and Nuriya to make, you know, the language actually be smart language and not like random stuff that Heather writes down. With the idea that you will then tomorrow be asked to prioritize the things. I haven't, I want to see how this conversation shakes out before I give you any more information about what it means to prioritize the things. Because I don't know how many ideas we're going to end up with, and so it might mean ranking housing things against housing things or. You know, homelessness things against homelessness things, or here's all the things together, pick your top ten. I I I don't know yet. Because I don't know what what all your homework is, but there is, it would be premature to do it now to to Bob's point, because you haven't heard all the ideas. And many of the ideas do have implications for different departments, so make sure you have the universe of choices before you, before you make any. Is your hand up again or still up? No, good, okay, cool. So so to your point, Aaron, yes, there will be decision points. I think you heard a lot of common themes. I think you have a fair amount of information for when we get to whatever that looks like tomorrow for housing. And what I hope tonight is we'll do the same thing we just did after after a dinner break here. On homelessness, and then maybe if we can get to one of those, one or two of those other things, that would be grand. Because these are the, these are the big, you know, the big common themes, and then some of the ones tomorrow are more discreet items. It seems, and we can tackle them, you know, probably each one of those topics in fewer than a couple hours. So that's, that's the vision. What do you think about that, Aaron?
Sounds good. Yeah, I agree. We need to see the whole universe of possibilities before prioritizing.
Kurt, I can't help but notice you have your hand up. Was that there?
I do. If if I could just say one closing comment as well, it's okay. I I I do want to thank Matt as well for his comments. I appreciate that. As it's a little more color to the conversation as well. What we do every, what we do every day is departments are actually big things. This year, we're going to be doing the planning and designing for the Alpine Balsam project, which is. Will be the biggest for balsam project the city has ever done. We just finished the biggest for balsam project the city has ever done at thirty Pearl. And there's, there's been some great development, you know, in our city over the last couple of years. We've completed four hundred and twenty seven units of affordable housing since COVID started. New units in our city. And I I think the way our departments show up every day in the combination of all the, all the work is is big stuff. And just wanted to lay that out there as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Great, council, we find ourselves at about six thirty, give or take a couple of two, three minutes there. Would love to give you an opportunity to stretch your legs, grab some dinner and whatever version of that is for you. As I understand it, staff has provided you gift cards. For whatever you want to spend your dinner on, or maybe it's in your kitchen. I don't really know. Something's cooking in my kitchen. I can smell it. I literally don't know what it is. Full of surprises, the family. So given that we have a lot, a lot, a lot of work to do, but I also think you'll do a lot, a lot of work better if you're a little bit refreshed. I think Aaron, as I understand it, would give you five. Is that right, Aaron? I just want to be, I just want to be more generous than you.
Ninety seconds.
Okay, so great. So how about ten? And it's ten twenty six, so if you would come back at ten thirty six, that would be fantastic.
Six thirty six.
That's what I meant, ten minutes at six thirty six. That would be a really long break, and I'm not that nice. Fantastic. Six, okay, now it's six thirty seven. We are officially broken. Go forth, get dinner, see you in a hot, hot ten minutes. Go. Hey, staff, friends. I just opened my email and I didn't realize that, um, Junie had sent me some slides, um, that are her homework. So I just forwarded them to Taylor and to Chris. I don't know who else would need them if we, I can show them, which is fine, but I don't know if you wanna show them there. Do we need them, Junie?
No, uh, you don't. I just assumed that you wanted us to share the homework.
Oh.
With you.
Okay, oh, so we're good?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, I had a little panic attack.
So, uh, hello, everybody, I am here, but I'm gonna turn my camera off while I eat my dinner, but I'm, I'm present and listening.
Okay, present and listen. You know, you know, all right. Um, so well, I'll assume that everyone's here. Um, Rachel, just, yep. Thank you very much, I see everybody else, and I think we're good, right? Yeah. All right, so. First of all, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Tara and Aaron for doing a bang-up job gathering some of those, uh, thoughts and clarifying and honing them in. That was fantastic, and it's exactly what the dream was, so thank you for living the dream. Um, and so now we come to our conversation about homeless. Um, again, for those who are paying attention, the same questions that, um, I mentioned earlier, we posed, um, to Nicole and Junie, gather what you've heard from your colleagues and from staff, and come back, um, with some refined ideas. So, Junie and Nicole, how did it go? What ideas do you got? Hit us.
All right, I think we did pretty well. Uh, we managed to pare everything down into, um, two main ideas, so.
Oh, wow.
Just kinda talk through them. And, um, I think maybe just to, to start and preface this, um, the first one, the alter, all address, um, is a day shelter. Um, and, you know, in thinking about this, the, I, I was one of the people who proposed, um, you know, making use of some of the funding that's gonna be available later this year to build out some, some additional services. And, you know, fundamentally, the problem was trying to be solved, um, here was how do we draw people out of, um, our parks and, um, other spaces who are currently unsheltered and using those spaces, um, as kind of a living space, uh, not having anything else. So that's sort of the problem that, um, that this first one is really trying to address. Also recognizing this as a two-year work plan, not a, you know, 10-year, um, where, where are we gonna be in 10 years? But, um, for this, for the day shelter, um, the endpoint, I'm just gonna read this as I wrote it, um, just to kind of paint a picture for people of, of where, where we might try to get to. A low-barrier day shelter is up and running that measurably improves public spaces and the health and wellbeing of those experiencing unsheltered homelessness by drawing people out of encampments, creating a welcoming and inclusive space to engage with service providers and providing a single location for service access. The navigation center builds a sense of healthy community, meets people where they are on their housing journey, replaces unproductive habits with productive habits. And those engaging with the day shelter are on a path to housing. So, for example, they are, um, getting maybe diversion services, they're getting help with IDs, they are, um, submitting housing or disability, Medicare, Medicaid, social security, um, applications, those kinds of things. So that's, that's the picture of, of, of what, what this is about. Um, the specific actions and asks, uh, would be identifying a building for purchase and/or renovation and enabling it, outfitting it for use as a day services navigation center for those experiencing unsheltered homelessness. We would need to collaboratively plan programming priorities for the day services navigation center, contracting with vendors and community providers who can coordinate and or administer programming to services, um, using a group of folks that I'll talk about in just a moment. Um, services would be targeted to create self-sufficiency and provide a path to housing. Um, the third thing, as third specific action ask here is to identify and secure sustainable funding mechanisms for day center operations using any or all of federal funding, state funding, and potentially fees from service providers, uh, like those who might be using the, the center for reimbursable work with clients. Um, where this would sort of hinge on is hiring a facilitator to bring together a group that includes local homelessness services providers, people with lived experience of unsheltered homelessness in Boulder, and city staff, um, and they would basically be the ones, um, kind of leading those in partnership, right? Kind of co-creating all these things together, um, as well as to facilitate community engagement. Um, so we, the people that we see involved in this, um, the staff, city staff, the facilitator, um, community groups, service providers, and council, all taking an active role in the engagement process, reaching out to community influencers and stakeholders to try to garner support for this work. Um, and I did make a chart that has a timeline, cuz, you know, I'm, the whole scientist thing, I do charts, but, um, I don't have to show it, it's basically just kind of mapping out. Really, we see this as kind of being a two-year process, um, to incorporate that part about taking advantage of the state, um, or the funding that's gonna be available. I just wanna make the distinction, this is not that $20 million that came in. This is a new pot of money that's gonna be available later this year, um, that the state legislature, uh, we have heard, will be, um, allocating to counties and cities around the state. Um, so there'd sort of be a building component of identifying, purchasing, and renovating the building that really would be spread out, um, over the next, uh, really, um, this kind of went all the way from, uh, quarter one of this year until quarter three of 2023. Um, the programming component, um, would kind of be ongoing, uh, starting quarter two potentially of this year. Um, and then, of course, we would need to hire a facilitator and create that working group right away to make this even remotely possible. Um, and the, the, the funding plan, kind of generating a, a plan for funding some of this work, especially some of the physical infrastructure work that would need to happen, would just be, need to be timed so that it corresponds to the expected availability of state or program opportunities for housing, mental health, and homelessness, um, services. Um, and the idea would be that service providers would, uh, assist in writing, um, applications so that not everything would be, you know, dumped onto, um, the, the city, that this would really be a very collaborative process, um, involving a number of folks in the community. Um, and, yeah, that basically that the program building and, uh, uh, thinking about how this program would function would really happen in kind of 2022, and then 2023 would be, um, more focused on, um, implementing community outreach and engagement.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, let's hear some questions or comments, Bob.
Uh, well, thanking Nicole and Junie, that, that was great, and thanks for that well-thought-out presentation. And of course, this will require a lot of, um, discussion among us, so we probably have a thousand questions. But I'm just gonna ask one of them right now. Um, and that is, um, we, we, we had a conversation a few weeks ago about the possibility of doing an overflow shelter, which, of course, is night sheltering. Um, when our, our shelter, our existing Boulder shelter, North Boulder, can't, uh, always, uh, shelter folks. Uh, so I'm just understanding, I wanna understand a little bit, um, the interrelationship between the day shelter that, that we're contemplating and, uh, the potential for an overflow shelter. Would this be potentially put into service on overflow nights? Or would that be completely separate and overflow sheltering is a, a separate discussion, independent from a day shelter? That's, I, I know that, but I know I don't wanna get into the weeds a little too much, but that's a kind of a big discussion that we already started to have.
Right, yeah, and so my understanding, um, from talking with Kurt, uh, the other day, and, and Kurt, please correct me if I'm misunderstanding something here. Um, there are some additional code requirements, um, for buildings and things for overnight sheltering. Um, you know, in, in, in my sort of ideal world and envisioning this, and I think the way that many of us have talked about it, you know, if you have a space that's open during the day and providing services, then it seems like a logical next step, that that space would be, um, available during the night, right? Um, just thinking about some other ways to, uh, staff that, or, you know, other, other vendors and people to kind of get in there and help with that. Um, but gosh, it sure would be nice to have, you know, the other space available and feels a little silly to just let it go to waste overnight when the weather's bad.
Thanks, Nicole.
I wanted to add to what Nicole said, there is a difference between a day shelter in a, like you said, Bob, in overflow night shelter, because it's different programming. One is providing nighttime beds without any type of programming, and the other one is the day shelter is not providing, you know, beds, but it's providing a different type of service.
Yep, okay, that's helpful. Rachel, question, comment?
Um, question, and I know we haven't heard the second part yet, so, um, I'm cognizant that there's more on homelessness coming, but, um, or I think that's true. Um, but in terms of the work group that you're thinking about seating, because I think a lot of us do have concerns that are broader than day shelter, which I'm very supportive of. Um, but, you know, also to Bob's point, we were, we look at overshow, like overflow, I, I have concerns about, you know, you can't check into a shelter anywhere after 7:00 PM. There's, there's a lot going on in homelessness. Could this work group be visualized as broader than just coming up with day shelter? This is part one of my question, and then part two, um, would you visualize that council would have, uh, it would come back to council to make sure that whoever were not on an individual level, but sort of as a representative level, that we have the right people at the table a, as a city?
Sorry, can you repeat that last one? Um, so I got you.
Yeah. Whoever's gonna be part of that work group can, can we, is your vision that that would come back to council for approval? Not necessarily the, you know, Nicole Spear's gonna be on it, but like a representative at council is gonna be on it, and then these providers are gonna be on it, and, you know, like organizational representation, people with lived experience representation, so that, and part of why I asked this is because I asked for this at the last retreat that we have a city work group, and I was told we have that, but it turned out it meant the county one, and so I'm very interested in a city-based, city-populated work group, so I wanna make sure that that would come back to us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, and, and Junie, please, you know, jump, jump in here as we were talking about it. Um, but yeah, I mean, the, the work group, uh, there's already been a community group working, right? There were a couple of stories that, um, were just published, one just came out in the Boulder Beat, I think, today, um, about a group of service providers who have been thinking about this for us, right? Coming to, coming up with some ideas of what would it look like, right? If we had some, um, housing-focused services that, you know, we're recognizing that not everybody is quite ready for one reason or another to, to go to the shelter. And so, you know, I envision it kind of being, um, being a group like that, right? That really brings together the service providers. To my understanding, this was kind of the first time that all the service providers in Boulder have kind of come together like this, you know, to really have this conversation, and, and I think that's just so valuable, you know, to have that. So, um, you, you know, the, in, in my mind, the way that I think about this, and, um, is, you, you know, this, this is something we're gonna be working on for a while if we're really wanting to put in place some, um, different steps towards solutions, right? And, and, um, this is sort of a, a, a step one, um, of having this, you know, s, um, central location where folks can go to, where service providers can, um, kind of come and m, meet with their clients, um, that were, you know, getting a place that is drawing people to the center because they wanna be there, right? And because there's useful services there that, that they're finding and able to move forward with, but that it doesn't end there, right? There are other things that go along with it, you know, depending on, for example, um, I know that, uh, safe parking is something that, um, CAB and HRC have kind of talked about, right? It's, it, we've been talking about this for a while. Depending on where the building is, maybe there's, you know, a parking lot that can be used there for that, right? For, for a safe parking kind of facility too. So I think there's a lot more, um, that could come out of this. But, you know, in my mind, having a space for people to be during the day, um, where they can connect to service providers is sort of a, a ground zero, the foundation, um, for this.
So I, I answered, um, the question, so no, and, and maybe I'll just make a pitch to colleagues instead. As I think that if, if we do seat a work group, I would like it to come back to council to make sure that, that we agree that the right, you know, representation is at the table. And number two, I would, I would hope that that work group could, if there's a, a pressing need, be looking and weighing in and making recommendations that are outside of day shelter.
Okay. Matt, what's on your mind?
Thanks, Heather, and, uh, I also, I, I just wanna start by thanking Nicole and Junie, um, cuz as someone who, who had a priority for day sheltering and services, I wanna thank you guys for not just, uh, uh, folding that into what you're doing, but running with it and providing so much greater thought. folding that into what you're doing, but running with it and providing so much greater thought and context. So thank you for 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 going the extra mile on it. And and as we talk about day shelter, I think it's important for us to remember the cost of not investing in this. And and really, you know, this is a call out to David Farnin. Our libraries are our de facto day shelter. And that infrastructure and our staff are woefully under-equipped to do the work that's necessary to support our unhoused. And so I really just want to make sure that the cost of not doing anything isn't nothing. The cost of not doing anything is a massive burden on staff and infrastructure that is not prepared for that. So so I I I think there's, there's a big divide in which we need to cover in order to move services and support for our unhoused, not just for them, but away from staff and infrastructure that is already taking an unnecessary burden on that front.
Thanks, Matt. Council, any other questions or comments? So Nicole, just wanting to capture this in a relatively short and concise way. You had a lot of different ideas that sounded like it was a sequence of events, but overall, is it, is it a fair summary to call this initiate a two-year process for planning and implementation for a day shelter with service provision? And then parenthetically, some of those other steps, is that fair?
Yes, yeah, all those other steps are really part of that, of trying to get to that endpoint of having a a low barrier day shelter up and running.
Cool, okay. Seeing no other questions now on that one, I'd like to hear your second sexy idea.
The second part of our idea is homelessness tax, which I believe would complement this day shelter. The problem is, no one really knows where homelessness programming funds are coming from. Of course, the CD knows, have some idea of where it's coming from, but there's no line item in our budget that explain how the city funds for homelessness is being used. My colleagues made a lot of statements, right? Nicole made a lot of statements about, you know, future fundings for or day shelter, but really, when you really think about it, it's still very much speculative. We really don't have this money in our hand. So currently, the funds for homelessness services and program fluctuates, and it's unpredictable. Various city departments also use their resources towards the homelessness issues. So having a tax can free up funds to allow departments to take care of their own issues. Also, Kurt shared a document with me and Rachel that showed that the CD spends about three point two million on human services. That's just a ballpark, and housing and shelter service, just housing, was about over two million dollars of that money goes toward housing. So placing a measure on the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two ballot to fund additional services for those experiencing homelessness would, is the ask. And part of the ask, and I think the question that you ask, what are some the, some of the actions that need to be taken? It would be to identify an appropriate amount of funding needed for the services identified by service providers around the community, such as all the different collaborative organizations, institutions that provide homelessness services around Boulder. Determine a tax rate that would be sufficient to fund the cost identified in point one, right? Which is based on the amount of services that we need. And also, I believe this financial strategy committee can play a role in identifying the ta- tax rate for a ballot measure based on our levy cap. For hire one or more consultant who can assist with staff, who can assist staff in identifying the cost of service provision, identifying the tax mechanism for a ballot measure, and also to help do community outreach and engagement for a ballot measure. So I think most of us on council have seen the process of how it works, how, you know, items get on the ballot. First, we, the financial strategy committee, I believe we will have a meeting sometimes next month. That would be part of that process as well. So it would be first quarter, we would identify costs, identify the tax mechanism would be next, and also draft a ballot proposal that would eventually come before council. And also, there would be some outreach that would have to be done, I believe, sometimes in August. That's what I remember based on as a member of the financial strategy committee and when the community and safety tax came before council. And the endpoint is, again, a tax that is passed to support ongoing homelessness services.
Thank you, Junie. We got questions or comments? Mark, hit it.
Two questions. The first is, do you see this more as a sales tax increase or real property tax increase?
Yeah. I know that sometimes even on council that we've had this discussion, right? Whether it should be a sales tax or property tax. I'm not, how do I put it? I think I would leave it to this group to decide whether it should be a sales tax. I have my own idea that community, all community members should participate. I would be open to a sales tax, but I know there are council members here would say, no, we don't want to sell stacks because it's not equitable, because we know poor people pay more. But we also have tourists who comes to Boulder who would contribute to a sales tax. So for me, I think I would prefer it to be a sales tax, but I think there are community, there are people on council who would prefer it to be a property tax.
Well, my my concern there is, if my recollection is correct, I think we get fourteen cents on the dollar with respect to real property tax. And so to get enough money to fund this might require an an increase that makes it less likely that the community will support it. My second question is, because we have to go to the community to support it, do we have a plan B if if for any reason they don't? In terms of funding and and ongoing funding?
Yeah, a- again, I think at this moment, you know, my council colleague Spear just mentioned all these different ways and avenues. Again, that's still very speculative, right? If we were to go to the voters and they say no, well, the voters say no.
And that's, that's a fair response. I'm just concerned if we want to do this, and we have an ongoing obligation to do this, we need to make sure we have a funding mechanism to do this. I like to think that as a compassionate community, we would support this. But you never know. And that's why I'm asking, is there a backup financing mechanism for handling the expenses?
Thanks, Mark. Bob, question or comment?
Yeah, I just have a scoping, sitting inside with, whether there's a tax, whether property or sales, whether the amount, so on and so forth. Putting all that aside, I just have a question really for staff, and it's really a scoping question. What work would staff have to do to determine if if there was incremental money available? What would you do with it and how would you spend it? You don't have to answer that question. I'm asking you the scoping question, which is what work would you have to do in order to determine whether more money would be a good thing? Because I I know more money sounds like a good thing, but I I know it's more complicated than that, because then you have to figure out how to spend it, and then how long is it for, and what commitments you're making, kind of to Mark's point. So it's a really probably question for Kurt as much as anybody, you know, what what work would you have to do to figure out if you had an incremental two million, three million, five million, seven million, whatever? Whether that was a good thing or a bad thing, and and how you would spend it? Because I think we can't really go to the voters for an ask unless we have a pretty well-defined description of what the the funding would be for, and I know that would require a lot of work on on your team's part.
Uh, thank you, Bob. So we did a, we did a little bit of that a couple years ago, but was, it was for a potential affordable housing ballot initiative for the county. And that was a, that was a few months worth of work. And we also looked at what could be done with different increments of money? So what kind of projects or outcomes could be done with different, different increments of money? I I assume we'd want to take a similar approach to this. And I I I think you're aware that the the county commissioners are also considering in the affordable housing and mental health initiative, so we obviously wouldn't want to compete with that. And then there's a, as far as, you know, with ta- which tax approach would work? The the pollsters that we've worked with at the county do incredible polling and really ask those questions. And from that polling, you get, you know, pretty clear direction on what voters would support. But if I could just take this opportunity to answer Junie's question as well, I've got a bit of information on on, from a funding standpoint, and particularly a a lot of funding that's really come into homelessness over the last year or so. And I must say, we're bringing in resources from the outside like we've never done before. And 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 pretty much under the banner of HSBC. And and under that banner, five point six five million dollars worth of vouchers have brought, been brought in, but three, three million through through the COC and state programming. The attention homes are are together vouchers of eight hundred thousand. A a few months ago, we, HSBC was awarded a hundred and eight, a hundred and fourteen H V vouchers, which accounted for one point seven million. We got seven VAS vouchers for veterans, a hundred and forty thousand. And then the county over this last year or so has put about five hundred thousand into COVID responses around the L there and be there, the COVID Recovery Center. And then five hundred thousand for staff and phones, PPE testing at shelters, rapid rehousing, two hundred and fifty thousand. And then the city funding, because Junie was asking that the other day, for twenty twenty-one was was six point three million. About seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for for shelters, hundred thousand for be there, three hundred thousand for hotels, nine hundred twenty one thousand for our city voucher program, forty eight thousand for the Bridge House Rapid Rehousing Program, two hundred thousand for family assistance support, and then our Keep Families House program, which you heard about last year, two hundred and sixty three thousand. And the home equity, the the Health Equity Fund supported nine hundred and eighty thousand. Our new ePress program, two hundred and eighty thousand. And we put two point seven million dollars in in this year for a specific affordable housing program or development, which will be housing forty previously homeless individuals at thirtieth and Mapleton as well. So it's, I I don't want to underestimate the collaboration that's occurred under HSBC and the incredible amount of resources that have come in over the last year and a half.
Can I just interrupt just, just for one second? And this is actually just a clarification question that I realized I'm a little bit lost on here. Junie, are you talking about the entire suite of homelessness, you know, services from like, you know, somebody who might be staying with a friend because they're, you know, in between rent or something like that versus like people who are unsheltered? So I guess my question here is, is this specifically talking about unsheltered homelessness, right? Which is a section of the larger homelessness picture? Because Kurt, the things that you just described, we're talking about the large, like the full suite of homelessness, right? And I just wanted to make sure that all of us are on the same page in terms of what what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I, thank you. I appreciate you, Nicole, paying attention to that as well. And I think, you know, I appreciate Kurt's comments, you know, I I just think he was going over the gamut of the type of services that he offers, but of course, you're right, we were talking about people who are experiencing chronic homelessness, you know, people who are on the streets. So and I'm sure there are other programming for people who are living with, you know, other people. That's, that's something completely different.
And I think, you know, some of the stuff that Kurt's talking about, right, translates to that a bit. Because certainly, you know, the voucher program and some of these things are moving people to permanent supportive housing and all that. But thank you, I just wanted to make sure, because Kurt, I know you and I were kind of talking across each other the other day, because you were talking about big homelessness, I was talking about unsheltered homelessness, so thank you.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Aaron?
Okay, well, thanks so much for that, Junie. It's a really well-thought, thought-out and well-put-together proposal. And I look, look forward to exploring it. And I would have had a number of additional questions, but you laid out a pathway where the financial strategy committee would consider the different possibilities and then make a recommendation along with community input. I think that sounds like a great approach. Because then we can work through the different possibilities, also like sales versus property and how much of a tax should be, also the exact uses. That, and that's probably more of a later council decision to be made than the financial strategies one, although they they interact with each other. But so I think there'll be lots of great conversations to be had that really support exploring this and moving forward with this. And then I'll just say, while I got the floor, that similarly, thank you, Nicole, for your also very well-articulated explanation of that previous, the day shelter idea, which I'm also fully in support of us moving forward with and exploring this, as you stated.
Tara, what's on your mind?
On mute, there we go. So, uh, Mark kind of asked my question already, honestly. We, I support the day shelter, as you know, and so we get started with it. But are you and Nicole and Junie, are you saying that you're intertwining both and it's both? Do we have any way of having a day shelter without having a tax? Because there's a fifty-fifth, let's say there's, there's a chance that, you know, the ballot measure wouldn't go through. So it would make me nervous to wrap those two together, just because you put all this work into our day shelter and then don't have any way to support it. So that's my question.
Yeah. Ladies?
I I I appreciate this question, right, Tara? And I think you are, you are right to think about this. But again, as I mentioned, it's still very much speculative, the way we want to fund this particular, you know, program. We 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 intend to get a building, right? That's gonna cost us a lot. Where is that money coming from? Once we get the building, we're gonna need staff, we're also gonna need programming. So at the end of the day, this is not gonna be just a one-time setup fee, right? There will have to be sustain, what what essentially I want to say is that grant funding is not a sustainable way to fund this particular program, right? Or any type of homelessness programming, because it's, it's hard, right? Because this year you may have, if you have, let's say, the Kurt, he's, he has staff to help him, you know, get that funding, right? His staff is with him, okay, he's fully staffed. Let's say he can apply for five million dollars because he's fully staffed. Well, right now, we know that he's understaffed, and I think he mentioned he was understaffed by twenty people. You can chime in, Kurt, but imagine that he, some of his, you know, grant managers are not available or to apply for these grants. Let's say now he's probably gonna get two to three millions worth of grant. Is that enough? So to me, grant funding is just not a way to, that is sustainable. And I really believe that our tax can, would be more stable, right? Because we know we're getting this money every year to fund this for however long. And I just think that's more sustainable, and we would know, hey, here's how much money we have, as opposed to just speculate about how much money we can get from different sources.
Well, I guess my question was, is that the only option, the tax? Oh, there is, okay.
No, I I just, I wanted to add on, yeah, to that just a little bit. So this is one of the things that I think in in putting together the day shelter facility, that the service providers and that group that we put together to advise how this would work can really be helpful. Because they're the ones who are, you know, currently providing services, and many of them use grants to do that work now already, right? So, you know, even they don't always have completely consistent funding sources for every program that's going on. But I really think, you know, that this group would be the one to kind of come up with, what is that sustainable funding mechanism? But have that be part of the the planning pro- this two-year process, right? So that we don't end up with, you know, this building that nobody can use, because we don't have any money for it anymore, right? And and you know, some of the things, there's, there And, and you know, some of the things there's, there's federal funding options from HUD for the I think it's emergency service grant ESG, I think is the acronym. SAMSA, the Department of Justice, all kinds of different places that, that we may be able to get some funding for their state funding. And then also, you know, if service providers are coming in to this day facility and using that as a place to make connections with clients, they actually get reimbursed for those, you know, connections and interactions with clients. And so, you know, can we kind of is there, can, can we charge them a fee? For example, you know, because we're providing a space for them to come and make those connections and that's feeding their program funding, right? So, you know, is there, is there a kickback or something? So I think that there are lots of different options for how we could get to this. But, you know, ideally, as this group is talking through what kind of programming would exist in this center, they would also be thinking about how are we funding this in a sustainable way? So that if, you know, voters decided, no, no, we don't, we don't want to do that. Then, then, then we still have a mechanism. I mean, the, the nonprofit community that we have here is really strong and, and they're really committed to trying to address this issue. I think this is a place where we can really lean on existing service providers to help us figure it out.
Thanks, Nicole. Rachel, question or comment?
Um, comment. I want to say I completely appreciate Junie's creativity here and thinking outside the box. But I have like a sort of a philosophical concern and then an alternative funding idea. So first, I think a tax like this would make more sense at the county level because the county is in charge of HHS, Health and Housing and Human Services and Health. So I don't think that the county effectively prioritizes what Nicole and Junior are talking about here, which is supports for people who are homeless and haven't won either figuratively or literally the housing lottery. So people who are unsheltered and remain unsheltered. I think that the county should do its part better. And so when we're talking about funding a day shelter, I think that money should come from the county because it's county residents who will be attending the day shelter and the county should not stop it. You know, funding the, the Boulder sheltie and shelter. So that's one thing is, is I, I would push it to the county. And we did not put the library funding tax or question to voters last year, and we basically said, you know, kind of wait your turn, we'll get to you. And now I think we'd be crowding the ballot kind of at them again. And if the library measure passes, we should have a bit of a funding of a, a budget windfall that we could divert some of that funding to homelessness if we wanted to use it that way. Again, I, I think that the county should, should be funding some of these services better than it is and not just looking at the affordable housing component of housing first. Because housing first still recognizes that not everybody has housing at that time. And I, I believe that, that we shouldn't be the only ones funding that. So I, I would say if, if there were to be a tax, I would rather see it at the county level. But I think that the county probably has the funds and isn't using them in this way. And just to those viewers who are with us tonight, I will just share that I spoke with a, and a previous county commissioner a couple, two years ago, maybe, and they told me that they got exactly zero emails on homelessness a week, that, that it's just not something that the community is talking to them about. And it, this, this is really, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, we need to do more as a city on homelessness, but they need to fund it better as well. So if you care about this topic, I would say also speak to your commissioners because they need to step up too. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Matt.
Oh, Rachel, you crushed it because that's largely what, where I was gonna go. So I, I won't repeat. I'll just say ditto on the county and, and and how we march forward with that. So I appreciate your thoughts. The only thing I would maybe add a little different was thinking of, of any tax in not in a silo that we're also going to be considering, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of increasing minimum wage. There's other things that we're looking to fund and the impact that that has on the cost of goods in our community. And so I just want us to, and, and also we're still in a pandemic. There are still people also really hurting. And, and so the timing of a tax may just may not be the best right now. And so I just, those things are all considered even property related. I just want us to know that, that the economic conditions may not be right for that and be okay with that, but knowing that there are other opportunities to get the money. So so anyway, I just want to say thanks for Rachel for saving me some oxygen.
Thanks, Matt. Mark.
I agree with, with both Rachel and Matt on their comments. I'm happy to, I, I'm a member of the financial strategies committee, and I'd be happy to take a look at it in the event that the county does not or will not act. But there's one question we have not asked, which we have previously asked of departments. When we're imposing a burden on them, we have to ask our finance department whether they have the bandwidth for this. We spent a lot of time, as Judy well knows, a lot of time looking at the infrastructure tax. And now we're in a, obviously a different environment. We need to understand whether our finance department has the, the capacity now to take a look at this and I'm not quite sure who we should address that to, Mark, Kara? If somebody could speak up and let us know where they are positioned in terms of taking on this additional work.
Any mini money, ladies first?
Thanks, Mark. Or Mark and Mark, I'll go first and then Mark can chime in. I guess I would say, I mean, the budget team is probably the most strapped in twenty twenty two of, of the different finance teams. They have a lot of really big projects on their plate and they are hiring as well. But I did see in the homework, the, the suggestion that we could possibly hire consultants. And I do think that there's potentially the opportunity to hire consultants to supplement the staff to do this work if that was council's desire and priority. But we share some concerns that have been expressed by many of the council members with regard to timing and ballot and such as well.
Okay, did that cover it, Mark? Or you want to add something else?
Yeah, I think we'll know a lot more after February since we'll, we'll have meetings with council that both address a potential cap tax renewal, conversation about the library as well. So I, I think in terms of understanding what finances capacity is looking like for twenty twenty two will depend on council discussion and action within that February window.
I would like to ask, Rachel, do you have any indication of when the county will jump or not jump on, on a countywide tax?
On homelessness, do you mean? I don't think they're even considering. I'm just saying, I think that's where it would more properly vest. I do think that there's a a broader, maybe, uh, mental health and services tax being looked at. And I don't know if some of that could be used for this purpose too.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Nicole?
Sorry, having trouble hitting unmute button. Yeah, I just wanted to come back to this issue of the county, specifically as it relates to well, I think all of this, but really the, the day, the day shelter just as a really concrete example. So I think, you know, somebody from the county would really need to be a part of this collaborative group that's working together to create a solution, right? Since for a lot of our services, the funding and things comes from the county level. But I think this is really a place where the city can lead the way, right? As the, the city that kind of provides the sheltering services or most of them for Boulder County. I, I think we can really lead the way here, right? So by initiating some of this, initiating a conversation that includes the county. I think we can, we can hopefully serve as a model for kind of how we can do things. I will also say to somebody who has written grants and understands how you, how you can get grants, like showing those collaborations, like if we would have something that was coming together that had all the service providers that had the city that had, you know, the county behind it. That to me feels like something that would be hard for the state to say no to in terms of getting some of this physical infrastructure and things in place for that. So anyway, just to the point. County definitely as a partner here, but Boulder really kind of driving some of this work.
Thanks, Nicole. And Junie?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to maybe respond to some of Rachel and Matt's concern. And I don't disagree with either one of you about your comments. For instance, I understand the library districting, there's gonna be some funds that are free up, but I've already heard discussions of how that money will be spent. Either, for instance, that funding will stop completely. And maybe some of that money as well, which is about eight, eight to ten million dollars will be used, you know, to help support small businesses, right? And revitalize small businesses. So I, I, I just don't know if we can rely on that money itself, right? And it goes back to exactly, again, we have to think about long term, long range, not just for the moment. Again, I think we would hit the same issue that we have this building, we have funding for this year, do we have funding for the next three, five, 10 years? That's something that we would have to think about. The comment that Matt made, I, I completely understand there is a pandemic, right? And some of the, you mentioned cost of goods and all these, but again, we are considering what would it look like, right? What does this tax will look like? What is, what will be the impact? How much should it be? Maybe like you said, homelessness is something that is important to us, right? Protecting communities and not taxing them too much is something that is important to us. But we have to find a balance. We have to find a balance. And that's again, I would say maybe we should give staff the opportunity to give us some of these answers. And I think it goes back to exactly what Nicole said. We need to lead the way. And if the county want to join us, we should welcome them. Open arm, bring them in if they want to be part of that process. Let's say I don't want to add a percentage. Let's say we decide to come up with a percentage and the county said, you know what? We want to add to this. Let them be part of that process. But nonetheless, we can't sit here and wait for them. And I have to say, even before I got on council before twenty nineteen, I've heard of this idea that, you know, the county has, and I think Rachel, you're right. I don't want to say they have done nothing, but, but they have, they have not, you know, they have not been the driver. We, the city of Boulder have been doing so much and I know that and I understand that. But hey, it's still people who live here in our community and we want to do something better. We want to create a community where we care for every segment of our community. And I understand, and I, I don't want to add anymore to this comment because I don't want my words used against me. But, um, but I just think we have a great opportunity.
Thank you, Jenny. Tara, one more thought there?
Why am I having trouble finding the mute button?
I, everyone is struggling tonight. I like, it's always
I want to give a shout out to my husband who made homemade brioche, but that's not why I just because the egg comment from last week, I didn't want, you know, I wanted to make sure you knew.
He's been redeemed.
Anyway, moving on. I'm gonna have to agree with Matt here because this is what worries me. You know, I like to talk about what worries me. Isn't Judy Amable bringing forth a, a tax idea for mental health? Is she council people? Did you hear of that? Yes, no?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I don't want to see a situation where we have that for on the ballot and then we have this. And then everybody says, no, too much taxes. So I actually don't think that this is, I'm gonna have to agree that I don't actually think this is the right time. I think we should try for the grants in the county right now in history. Because I'm thinking about the mental health problem, which is so big. And we really need that as well. That's all I'm going to say about it. Thanks for letting me talk one more time.
I want to hear from Rachel, and I can't help but observe that Aaron's mute has come on and off like four times, which makes me think he has a thought. And then it might, and then we might want to wrap this up. And perhaps we've heard the range of things on this topic. Go ahead, Rachel.
And now I'm hoping we get to transportation yet tonight, Heather. So I, I think there's a decent chance and it might be a quick discussion. Just want to say, my understanding is that Judy Amable has been pitching a countywide tax in keeping with what Tara mentioned, but it, it hasn't, I believe, found purchase yet.
Okay, thank you. Erin?
I was going to speak on that same thing. So yeah, there, there's been a consortium that Judy Mobley has been taking a leadership role and looking at. This is the, this is the jail tax that the county has that's expiring at the end of twenty twenty four. About the possibility of extending that and repurposing it for mental health support. That would have to be done by the county commissioners. My understanding is that they're not planning on doing it this year. They're not sure if they would do it next year, or maybe would go all the way into twenty twenty four, and they haven't committed to the purpose of such a tax. So it might or might not happen, and it might or might not be devoted to mental health. So that's on that. And I'll just say, you know, I'm hearing diversity of opinions on the question of this particular tax, but also a lot of interest in collaborating with the county. Regardless of how we move forward. That could be certainly something that we take away from this discussion is to have, you know, a couple council members reach out to county commissioners and say, hey, we have a lot of interest in working on this issue. We'd love to have it be a collaboration between the city and the county from both, you know, funding and a programming perspective. Now, again, we're already part of HSBC, right? So a lot of that collaboration is happening already. But there, there's an interest in moving it into another phase with maybe some different purposes and approaches. So that, that could be a takeaway from this is to have a couple of council members work on that with county commissioners.
Thanks, Erin. All right, Nicole, you started it off. I'll give you the last word.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just wanted to say I forgot to add here the, I promised I would for each one, the role for council. So the role for council, you know, as I see it in moving forward, some of this work is really to help bring the community together and get us all moving in the same direction and get alignment in terms of what it is we're trying to achieve, right? So, you know, really doing some outreach with the community. You know, trying to help folks understand the, the purpose of this facility, not as a way to kind of allow people to live in encampments in perpetuity. But really as a way to, to draw people in, to get them out of the parks, to give them a space to be during the day where they're getting connected to services, right? Maybe not on that very first day. But they're coming in, they're building trust and they're really getting to a path out of homelessness. And I think this really ties into the city and the county's strategy around how we are moving people into housing, right? Which is ultimately what ends homelessness. So I just wanted to make, make that point that I think this is really where, you know, all of us are going out helping get the community on board with this model, right? Helping to kind of champion the center, right? Really making it a community effort because this is something that I truly have not talked to a single person living in our community or working in our community who doesn't care about this issue of unsheltered homelessness. So it really feels like a place where we could bring, you know, the whole community together as we're we're trying to build this.
Excellent. Thanks, Nicole. All right. So council, we did say that it wouldn't just be our assigned pairs to talk about homelessness. Want to give anybody else a chance to put something on the board above and beyond what's been said? But if the gals covered it, we can move on. All right. Junie and Nicole, thank you so much. That sounded like a lot of work and a lot of thoughtful consideration. Really appreciate you doing that and bringing it forward.
You, Heather, we didn't hear from staff on this, though.
Did?
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm wondering if we want to kind of hear from staff on like feasibility and, and things are, you know, Naria.
I was hoping that if they had questions, they would jump in. Sometimes they do, but staff. Did you want to share any perspectives above and beyond what's already been shared?
Just a quick, you know, I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the initiatives brought forward. It seems to me that Kurt has weighed in on the possibility of a day shelter and what that would take. So we can certainly consider that. My understanding on the homelessness tax, if that is something that council wants to take up is that it is doable. We may hire outside consultants to do it. We'll know more on February eighth, too, with FS, with the council, when we have some more conversation about our finances and about what that looks like. And certainly it will depend on the outcome of conversations. But it will be at least the exploration of that with the other tax measures and considerations will be at least a few months. And we will have to engage in our usual pollsters and consultants and so forth. And so we will wait to see what the outcome of council prioritization is.
Great. Thanks, Naria. I'd be inclined to move on, but Kurt, I noticed that your camera came on. You're cool if we move on?
I'm cool to move on. I don't have anything beyond what Naria had to provide.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now this is going to be a fun game. We technically have thirty more minutes. And Rachel alluded to the fact that transit and bikes and VMT things could be done quickly. Bob also sent me a message similarly about occupancy. And so, eeny, meeny, miny, moe. Rachel, are you raising your hand? You're volunteering to go first?
Well, I'm volunteering and also like Matt mentioned earlier, I'm a night owl. I would much rather present at seven thirty than I would much rather present at 7:30 than at 8:00 AM, if being honest here. Bob, you're a morning person. Let me have this.
Yeah, you know, I don't care when I present. I was going to suggest, I'm a morning person, so I'd be happy to start at 6:30 tomorrow morning, but that would be voted down pretty robustly. So, but I, I don't care who goes, if we do transportation now and occupancy tomorrow. I was just offering that I think I can do occupancy in probably 20 minutes or so. I suspect transportation will take an hour or so, but if people find going late, I'm, I'm okay.
Oh, challenge, oh, he just threw down a gauntlet, girl. Oh, she's like, challenge accepted. All right, let's get after and see what happens. Bob, you can be the first shorty one tomorrow morning. Rachel?
And we can also cut it off in a half hour and pick it back up in the morning with Matt doing all the talking. So Matt and I were assigned this section and we have slides. So are we ready for the slides to be met?
I think Taylor is going to activate the slides for us.
Hey, everyone, Pam Davis here. Taylor is getting right back in the meeting. Her computer booted out. She will share it momentarily.
I'm happy, I, I mean, if you give me share permission, I can throw my PowerPoint right up in the mix. But if it's just, if it's just a minute or two, we can wait for Taylor.
I just saw her pop back, so I think we're good to go.
Do you want us to talk him while we, the slides come up? There it is, because Taylor's amazing.
She is.
All right.
Matt, you want to kick us off with the acronym? I know you have a dad joke cure.
Oh, God.
I know, it's, well, I appreciate that, Rachel. No, no dad joke here. I'm just hijacking our, our beloved former president Obama by saying, yes, we can. By actually investing in a core arterial network. And really this involves, you know, and do you want me to keep going or do you like, just me introduce the, the title there, Rachel?
You're doing great, stay with it.
All right. And, and so, you know, as much as it, it's quippy, it, it's also aspirational and pragmatic in, in, we really can do this. And, uh, you know, what we're looking for is really to just propose that we shift some of our priorities a little bit to really enable us to, to unleash some, some meaningful investments. Not just in the current, but for, for, for down the road with regards to bike, pedestrian and bus safety improvements. And, and you know, really what it starts with is, is this map here, which, you know, want to give great credit to our TAB member, Alex Weinheimer, for, for helping prepare this. And it's really based on existing material that, that transportation staff and has put together with regards to, you know, low stress network and a bunch of other assets. And it really just lays out a, a, a two-phase plan of starting with these green dots and eventually migrating to sort of the yellow dots and yellow stuff about how we can make these investments in a coordinated fashion. And so it's really focusing on core arterial networks. And the main thrust of that is because that's where 65% of our crashes occur. And so really thinking about how do we make right on some of our vision zero? It really is going after the meat of where those crashes occur while providing great movement and great flexibility for our community to move through our, through town in a multimodal fashion. So what does that include? That includes, you know, Broadway dedicated bus lane. You'll see that in the red down below. We know that's a main artery and there's definitely some improvements to be had. It's, and you'll see in the legend what they, different pieces represent, but a lot of those circles are representing those conflict areas that I think are, are important to recognize there. It's also talking about baseline protected bike lanes between 30th and foothills. There is a repaving effort that is in the queue, so it makes sense to build that in as well. And then certainly talking about iris, 30th street and protected bike lanes. That may also be a conversation with Dr. Cog and leveraging some of our funds and matching funds with, with that large infrastructure money that's out there. And then certainly talking about Colorado Avenue and the bus priority of protected bike lanes there. And not forgetting Gun Barrel, who has, has been somewhat neglected over the years in terms of developing that, that nice connectivity. And understanding also that there's conversation of building that 119 stretch as well. So this is really starting to, to put meat behind the commitment to reduce VMT, to really be true to sort of reducing greenhouse gases, improving air quality. And really trying to strike a greater balance between where we put our infrastructure for cars and where we allow people to make a, a safe and informed decision, decision to choose an alternative to driving throughout our community. And so that's really what the proposal is, is how do we, is prioritizing those actions along with perhaps some study and some ideas on, on where we can move some, some staffing around. So I think we'll go to the next slide and we'll let Rachel take over.
And, and I, I don't think I heard you mention this, Matt, but right now we have 1.5 miles of protected bike lanes in the city. And this proposal would add another about eight or eight and a half miles of protected bike lanes. So that's an increase of like a factor of five if we complete, I believe, all the, the green dots and yellow dots that are on this map. So it would be a, a pretty transformative thing to shift some resources to focusing on this core arterial network rather than what we're doing right now, which is more neighborhood, where, where the streets are residential and 20 is plenty. Because as Matt mentioned, 65% of our accidents happen, of our serious accidents happen on these arterials, but they're only 16% of our roadways. So they account for a very outsized portion of our dangerous accidents. So under can, yes, we can. Additionally, you know, we're going to look at doing those green dots. And in the yellow dots, we want to steady something so that the parts of the map that are, it's so small here, but that have the yellow dots. It's Folsom Street, we're looking at protected bike lanes there. And then North 30th and East Pearl Street corridors. And then the, doing a study on the downtown, might, on downtown multimodal place making. And let me explain those a little bit more. So for Folsom, we're saying it, we're talking about protected bike lanes there again, but we're saying, let's, let's do it right this time. So Folsom south of Pine is already slated to be resurfaced. And that presents a really good opportunity to improve bicycle safety as we go. And then if necessary, we could also take a vehicle lane, you know, please just work with us here in considering it as part of a study and repurpose it to provide safe mobility for all users. In terms of the North 30th and East Pearl Street corridors, the existing corridor study that we did for 30th Street stops short of Pearl. So from Walnut to Diagonal, there's a lot of multifamily housing and, you know, a lot of destinations as well as the Boulder Junction Transit Center. So we want to, to be able to get grant funding for this segment. We need to conduct a corridor study in all likelihood. So we're proposing that as well. And then to the left, you know, kind of that boxed in area of yellow is the downtown multimodal and place making study we are proposing. So in conjunction with what I think we'll get to tomorrow, which would be the decision to permanently close West Pearl to vehicle traffic. We could consider pedestrianizing portions of East Pearl and the, the civic area, East Bookend. Both of those could be pedestrianized. And we can look at the 13, 13th neighborhood green street between downtown and civic area. Our TMP already calls for protected bike lanes on 11th, 15th Walnut and Pine, but none of them exist today. So we just have to, to look at all of those and they're so connected that studying them independently doesn't really make sense. So we're suggesting just a complete study of that whole section. Matt, you want to go into matching funds or shall I continue?
Um.
I'll, I'll finish this, I'll, I'll finish this slide.
Go for it, because there's still two more slides.
Okay, so for funding, we can look at Dr. Cog opportunities and, and that allows us to leverage local funds. And then we've talked a lot about staff capacity issues. So we're recommending that we could modify and free up some staff time in a couple of ways. So number one, we could delay the work on the next transportation master plan. We just adopted one in 2019. Right now they are on five-year cycles. So that is, there's some pre-work that's expected to start and soak up some staff time, uh, starting this year or next year. And so we're saying just pause the next TMP. We don't think that we need a new one. We need to accomplish what's already on that last one before we dig into more study. Number two, we put a lot of resources right now and a lot of staff time into some neighborhood treatments. So we've got the neighborhood speed management program, green streets, and then something called vision zero innovation. And that last one particularly has like, you know, staff, staff will spend two weeks on a pretty low yield treatment for a particular street where, where it's already 20 is plenty. And it just absorbs an outsized share of staff time in, in terms of like bang for your buck. And then last thing, we would recommend that staff really leverage the consultants as well as our members of TAB to innovate here as we've seen from this map, which is awesome. And, and Alex Weinheimer, as Matt said, just invented it for us for free two nights ago. And it's, it's a, it's a remarkably detailed and, and effective map. And, and again, just to reiterate what Matt pointed out, like all of the areas that, that look like bullseyes on there, those are our spots where we have, according to our safer streets reports, a, a lot of serious vehicle accidents. So while we're in there doing this, we can also make the, the changes that we need to crosswalks and lights and curbs and things like that. So we could really synergize with the, the overlay and where the serious accidents happen and where we're talking about bike lane improvements on these core arterial network cans. Over to you, I think, Matt.
All right, next slide there, Taylor, please. All right, so continuing with yes, we can, is really focusing on, well, how do we do that? And, and so what we have is a really, a kind of a suggested process and timeline. And, and I'll just connect back with Nicole. I know with, with her work in science, timelines and process are really the key. I, I, I lived in that world myself. We didn't just get to Mars whenever, we had actually a timeline to do that. So, you know, so what we have here is starting phase one in Q1 of 2022. But, you know, just, I think maybe it's worth noting, not every part of that first phase will be happening in, in, in exact cadence with each other, right? So, so these things will be staggered, but, but we will be starting work on some of these items in phase one. And we'll start some of that planning, which will take two to three months, do some public outreach, two to three months. Really remembering that for public outreach here, it's the quality, not the quantity of the outreach that we're, that we're aiming for. And then really looking at beginning construction in Q1 of 2023. Again, not everything all at once, but some of these will begin that construction phase really a year from now. And, and in all of this, as we sort of finish up, it's worth, again, looking at the opportunity cost. And, and, you know, we, you know, we, there was a study shared with, with city staff and, and council, I think we might've been last year. This is, you know, really the cost of not acting and not, and, and not investing now is that, you know, we basically will have severe injuries in fatal crashes that have been costing Boulder an estimated $7 million between 2018 and 2020. And so by shoring this up, we can actually make some great savings here. So this is where the opportunity cost, I think, is really important for us to look at of what not investing in this does, because we're going to be spending this money no matter what. So we might as well be spending it in saving lives and the infrastructure that sets us up for success in the future. And, and so I just want to pause and let you know that this is the end of sort of the protected bike lanes and, and really train and, and that, that specific of multimodal part of the presentation. We do have an extra slide that's going to talk about our colleague Lauren's ideas with regards to, to transportation. And so I don't know if it's, since, since this is sort of early plan one, if we want to pause and talk about this or also, you know, lay out some of Lauren's ideas and then talk about them all together. I, I kind of want to turn it back to Heather to see where, where you have your preference. I see Aaron's hand up as well, so.
I think let's take questions and comments on this one and then we'll hear the next one. Aaron, go ahead.
Well, thanks very much to both of you and to Alex. He is phenomenal. This is very high quality professional work here with a really fantastic vision. So I'm excited about this. I think provides some, some things to really look forward to. So just a, just a couple of comments here. So I, these generally look like fantastic corridors and directions to be working on and to move into. And then I just wonder if, if there might be a couple of other things to add to it, maybe check in with city staff. Cause like one thing that occurs to me is, you know, we're working on bus rapid transit on Highway 119 to Longwall, right? And you've got that busway that's, that's implementing that. And then the next one is the state highway seven on East Arapahoe. We have that study there. Eventually we're going to be working on those, better bus facilities on those. Both of those would then need to feed west into downtown. And at some point, we gotta, we gotta implement some better bus connections from, from those emerging BRT quarters into downtown. So, you know, something like this, I, I'd like, I, I get, I agree that we should start on it soon. But this kind of thing, stuff takes quite a while to finish. It's going to be fairly long-term. So to get all of it done, so think about maybe adding that in and then check in with staff if maybe they have ideas on a couple of other, if there are any others that, that might be really good to, to add into this, this network that you're talking about. And, and then just one, I, I thought your ideas on saving staff time and, and some money were, were generally good ones. I'll just put in a plug for the, to, to not completely derail the neighborhood green streets. Cause while those, those green streets are not areas generally where a lot of crashes happen, it's like, the idea behind them is that, is you give people a real clear route to go on for cyclists and pedestrians that are off the main arterials where the accidents do happen. And so to the extent that you're able to, to make wayfinding easier and the infrastructure a little easier on those green streets, it does get people out of some of the conflict zones on these major arterials where accidents do happen. So I, I think that's, that's worth, you know, keeping that on track in that initiative. So that's it, thanks again.
Yep, thanks, Aaron. Mark?
Yeah, I, I think this is a terrific presentation in that it addresses both what you want to do and what the trade-offs are for what you want to do. And I, I think that's, that's really important. I, I would like staff to weigh in to say, you know, are the things we're not going to do or put aside, will they be satisfactory to permit full attention to this? But I, I think this is a great proposal. I'm assuming these bike lanes would also be eligible for whatever funds we receive under the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill. And so this is, this is really well thought out and would be useful for this community. And I think we should do it. I, I, I'm happy to accommodate Aaron's request for green streets if we can. But this to me is, is, should be a very high priority and I look forward to seeing it implemented.
Fantastic, thanks, Mark. Nuriya, love to hear a staff perspective on this. There's some very specific timelines here, some very specific suggestions for trade-offs. Plus a, a, a rather thoughtful proposal. Any considerations at this time?
Uh, well, and I wonder too, council, if you'd like us to bring down the slide so we can see each other or do you still need it out?
I have one more in a minute.
Oh, got it. Well, at some point I'll, I'll let Eric, I think it's also a very thoughtful and appreciate the information brought forward, but I'll let Erica Vanderbrand sort of directly speak to it.
Thanks, Erica.
Thank you very much. So I guess I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I also, as you have, want to very much thank Alex Weinheimer for putting this together and in terms of the graph and so forth. And also thank you, council, for your thoughtful reflectiveness on this. It provides focus, it provides definition and it offers can to the community. And so I appreciate all those things and I definitely appreciate the, you know, acronym. I think the most important thing for me to say about this is that in order to accomplish all the things that you've identified over here, it is a question of trade-offs. As the slides have indicated, as you've indicated in your slides. And in order for us to do this all, we would need to make the kinds of trade-offs that you had identified. For us to maintain the green streets, we would either need to take something off of this or add additional staff to be able to accommodate that. And so just wanted to give you, you know, that heads up. But beyond that, I just want to say thank you. I think that this is a wonderful conversation that you're having.
Rachel?
Yeah, thanks for that, Erica. And I just wanted to add that Matt and I did check in with staff. I spoke with Erica yesterday and, and with a lot of TAB members. And, and there, there was pretty universal support for this notion, both from what we picked up from staff and from TAB. So I, I understand that the, the trade-offs are, nobody wants to lighten or loosen anything, but from the staff perspective, it sounds like what we're doing right now at the neighborhood streets is very staff intensive. And, and it, it sounds like maybe this is a welcome direction. So if I misunderstood that, Erica, please let me know. But that was, that was also a part, that was exciting for me to hear too.
Thank you very much for that. I, I think that it's the truth. We are passionate about that also, but you know, again, it is very staff intensive and resource intensive in that way.
Great, thank you. So Rachel, before we move on to the next one, just want to make sure I've captured this right in my idea sheet here. Is it okay if I have launched the core arterial network planning process for protected bike lanes as the thing?
I hope you're going to put can in quotes because we're really trying to sell an acronym that you can really, you know, think into for decades to come.
Agreed, and, and yes, we can. Well, I, I am no marketing expert, so I hope. Agreed. And, and yes, we can. Well, I, I, I am no marketing expert, so I hope whoever's in charge of marketing at the city and stuff can run with this. Cause I think it's awesome, but I also, it's, yeah, I'm a little biased, but anyway. Maybe, maybe Obama will give us a shout out and say, hey, you're ripping my thought here.
Matt and I did not come up with the acronym. We just like it. So credit, I probably back to Alex or Ryan Schuhart or somebody from TAB for that. Well.
Agreed.
All right. It's on the list. Uh, you said you had one more map?
Uh, yes, we did. Um.
I'll, I'll, I'll do this one. I think it's my turn, but I also want to invite Lauren. Um, Lauren Folkerts, this is your idea. So happy to have you. Um, pitch it if you'd like. Otherwise I will do so. Hearing nothing, I'm just going to start and if Lauren comes in, great.
Lauren, right? Sure. I'll, yeah, thanks for making a slide, you guys. And giving me great bullet points. So um you know, I think every during e- election cycles, often this sort of free bus pass or like citywide free bus comes up every year. Um, I think, you know, not only does that make bus riding a lot more accessible, easier, faster, because you don't, you know, and you don't have to deal with finding the change, dealing with, you know, everyone paying. Um, but um, we also have a lot of local, you know, um, eco pass programs and the neighborhood eco pass program that are um, require a lot of time and energy from our community. Um, and have some various issues. So I would really love to see us implement a citywide free bus. Um, you know, there's this past study that was done. And um, so I think the first portion of that would be looking at this existing study to see if it's um, if it's easy to update or could reasonably be updated to reflect current conditions. Um, at that time, I think there was an estimate of about ten million dollars for being, for the cost um, that the city would have to pay R T D to implement that kind of service. Um. So it would be great to have, to, you know, have the city review that and look at um what it would take to update that and then have sort of a study session on um how we can improve the bus service in Boulder um and ask R T D to be present. In order to pay for it, I'd also like to request um a ci- oh, a study for um on citywide parking management to um to pay for the program. I think that that has a lot of benefits beyond um, beyond the bus service. There's also the ability to that as we increase, look at increasing density throughout the city on reducing parking requirements that we would have the ability to manage parking in our community and therefore take away some of um the the concerns that often pop up around sort of that increased density. So yeah, I know that Rachel and Matt, you guys also like thought about this a little bit more. I'm not sure if I'm missing anything or if you'd like to add anything to sort of what you came up with as you guys thought about this too.
Rachel, Matt, Matt, Rachel?
No, I mean, I, Lauren, it was just, you know, I, this is part of the, you know, you have the conversation, try to di- digest and, and place those thoughts back on paper um as best as we can in order to capture your thoughts and your uh brilliance on uh this particular issue. Um, and so, yeah, so that, that's what we got there. So I, I hope we did you justice on, on putting that out there. That, that's our hope, but it is a game of telephone. So um white chicken can turn into three-legged stool pretty easily.
I hope you liked the slide. I think you knocked it out of the park with your description, so I, I will not try and, and add to your genius.
Great. Council members, any clarifying questions or thoughts on this proposal? Okay, I see no shaking heads. Erica, did you want to um share some thoughts?
Uh, thank you very much. I just had two very brief thoughts. First, um, in terms of this, uh, in terms of the actual study that was done before, um, to be able to look at this, um, you know, in a little bit more in depth, we would need to refine um and change some of the uh, I guess, look at, reanalyze some things that are in that study. And the reason why is that our transit landscape has um changed significantly since when it's done. So um COVID brought about significant reductions in our transit service to our community. And the current proposal that um R T D has out right now, five years from now, um, would only bring back eighty-five percent of the um twenty nineteen levels of service. And of that, um, that doesn't mean that Boulder would receive eighty-five percent of what it um formerly had. So significantly less than that. So that's one thing. In order for a um free eco pass to work for everyone, we actually need to have the transit service. So that's one of the challenges. And um I think, you know, with regard to, you know, um, other things, I, we would also need to have some additional staff support because we've been running um very strong uh to be able to get the hop service, um, you know, to make sure that that's operating effectively and efficiently in the, in the city as well as using um the uh electric buses for that. So just want to let you know that, but we are here to um.
Oh, Erica, you muted yourself right in the middle of your last thought there. And thank you. Nurya, just real quick thoughts um from you on this and then I'll go to Mark.
Uh, I think Erica spoke to uh most of that slide and appreciate um her expertise in looking at that. I will note on that last note about transferring one division of a city to another division that I will certainly take that into stride. We are looking at C V uh in different ways right now, but um certainly uh as we look to that and look at some of the information on the Tipton report, we uh will be, again, we, we hear you, we, we uh will take that into consideration, but that is certainly um something that will live with us on the operational side.
Excellent. Thanks for that, Nurya. And Mark, question or comment?
Uh, yeah, I was, I was going to express a little concern with the transfer of responsibility uh away from community vitality. Um, you know, one of their obligations is to understand and promote um the needs of small businesses. And I would not want to see that focus uh lost um through a, a transfer. Doesn't mean a TAB couldn't, couldn't do it, but I'd want to look at that pretty closely before we did do it. Um.
So Matt, love to hear the thinking behind this. Um, if you, if you have some to share?
Uh, yeah, you, you know, with regards to, you know, that, that sort of transference uh from community vitality to transportation, it comes from a few notes. One, that's, that's uh, that was a previous recommendation from TAB um at a previous uh retreat. So this isn't a new idea. It's been noodled, it's been thought of. Um, and, and so, so, so there's that. So this isn't just, this coming out of, out of left field. And, and the other facet here is, is thinking about, well, well, what are the larger, more comprehensive goals? And when you think about climate really driving so much of what we do and transit being such a fundamental part of our greenhouse gas emissions with vehicle miles traveled and our clean air, it seems a little disconnected that transportation is, is ma- is many ways overseeing the entire movement of a vehicle up until it goes into park. And so much of our parking is intrinsically um interfering with a lot of our abilities to think forward on climate, to reduce our dependency on vehicles and find some of those more creative solutions to vehicle miles travel. I mean, it's almost like we've institutionalized high viscosity with regards to where the car ends up. And so I think it's important for us to maybe think about that holistically and allowing one department to see the entire movement of a vehicle from beginning to end, and then, and then out again.
If I can colloquy with a question, um, I understand this is a recommendation by TAB. Is it supported by community vitality?
Okay, these are the questions. So I'm, I'm happy to hear from Nicole, but counsel, I just encourage you to maybe let this one lie. This is awfully operational. Um, uh, understanding how it does, you know, influence and impact uh goal setting and priority setting, which is certainly the governance role of council. Um, it just, it might be a little bit weedy for us to spend a whole lot of time debating it here. Um, Nicole?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a point. Um, you know, I know we, we talked about public safety in different contexts in various ways. Um, what I just want to bring up from kind of my neuroscience background, um, there is a lot of research that's starting to happen and emerge about the negative effects of air pollution um on brain development and the ways that leaves children especially um and adolescents vulnerable to um cognitive deficits, other neurocognitive issues. Um, I, in, you know, so me, as I'm thinking about this, plan to expand our, our bike system. I'm also thinking just about the potential reductions and emissions and things like that, that add to the collective safety um of our community. So anyway, thank you for lifting up this, this proposal.
Awesome. Thanks, Nicole. Um, so Matt and, and Rachel um and Lauren, just the way that I captured um this item broadly on my sheet is just implement citywide bus pass. Is that a fair little snapshot on it? Or do you want me to have different words there? It doesn't have a sexy acronym.
That, that's lacking and I'm sorry for that. Um, it seems like the word parking should be in there too, but I defer to Lauren on uh that aspect. It's more yours, but I, I think that citywide uh buses doesn't quite capture the parking.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. I agree.
Okay, and pardon, adding and parking. All right. Now, I do think we need to take a minute and give this team a shout out because A, that was thoughtful work, but more importantly, Rachel picked up the challenge that Bob laid down and got it done. Like, that was pretty amazing. Um, so wow, a team of la- a team of ladies and Matt, well done. Thank you very much. Um, Bob, are you going to, you about to talk some smack right here?
No, I, I'll, I'll take that offline with Rachel. But, but uh, before we move off of transportation, uh, this is uh the seventh uh retreat that uh Aaron and I have attended and uh I would be remiss if I didn't say for the seventh year in a row, something that, that intimately relates to transportation. And that's the word gondola.
Oh, I knew it was going to come somewhere.
That could have been the, a long game drinking game.
I'd say the whole community just took a shot, Bob. On their board.
I want to know in Twitter who just won bingo by, by that one. Who just won bingo?
I heard the odds were four to one.
Fantastic. Counsel, thank you so much for a really great conversation with really focused thoughtful ideas. I can tell that you did a, just an absolute bunch, a bunch of work um after I sent you my little email assignment. And I just could not be more impressed with uh where we got tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so tomorrow we start promptly at eight A M um with Bobby Yates um who's got some ideas on occupancy and then away we go with the rest of our list. And um again, we don't have teams on all the things, so we'll get through the items where we have teams. And then um we will get after the rest of um our ideas. Um, but again, if you're going to pitch on some of those other topics, really hope that you'll um take the lessons from these teams, focus ideas, really clear, concise items with a, with a definitive endpoint. Um, cause that uh is helping us sort of understand what the ask is and it will help you all prioritize the things against each other uh when we get to that tomorrow. So I am prepared to adjourn unless first, Nurya, you have anything for counsel before we break?
Honestly, just to thank you, we know that staff certainly is really invested in trying to get some of these ideas moving forward. And I hope you really hear us when we say that. And I just so appreciate you're all taking the time to chat amongst yourselves and really sort of help us lift in phases what we can move forward in these uh really unique and challenging times. So just thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Nurya. And Aaron, Mr. Mayor, anything uh for counsel before we let him go, uh, go to bed?
Uh, no, not, not at all. Thanks, except Heather, thanks to you for yet another excellently run retreat segment.
My pleasure, Aaron. Um, Stephen, did you have a thing before we set him loose? Cause your hand went up. He was like, oh no, I did not mean to do that. That was fun. Okay, great.
Well.
Yep.
I do, I, I realized though, there's another extremely important thank you, which is to all of our amazing staff members who have spent Friday evening with us tonight. Um, and have had such great responses and just, I'm just incredibly grateful for the collaboration that we have. And so thank you from the bottom of my heart and I'll say it again tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, Aaron. Staff, same. And you got a shout out also in the chat. Um, wonderful conversation tonight, friends. Um, go do whatever needs doing. We will see you promptly at eight A M. And uh with coffee, tea, whatever is your jam in your hand, we're going to get after it right away. No lead up, eight A M it starts. Don't be late. Good night.